All right, she is eight thirty and I am going to bring the committee of the whole meeting of September seventeenth to order. Got an agenda in front of us. There is one addition to the agenda. Close session. Personnel, section seventeen.
Personal privacy.
Personal, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Are there any other? Additions or deletions to the agenda? Counselor Christie.
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion to move the agenda as amended. All those in favor. Carried unanimously. We pre-circulated the minutes of the June eighteenth committee of the whole meeting. Any errors, omissions, concerns? Yes, Reeve King.
I'd make the motion to receive the minutes from the committee of the whole June eighteenth as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the meeting or the minutes of the June eighteenth meeting as presented. All those in favor. Carried unanimously. Okay, our first agenda item, two point one, will be the twenty twenty-five capital equipment plan presentation. And anytime you're ready.
Good morning Reeve and members of council. Today I'm here to support Mr. McNair as he presents the twenty twenty-five capital equipment plan. Historically, the capital equipment plan has been included in the annual budgeting process. However, given the nature of capital equipment, we are transitioning to presenting the capital equipment plan before the rest of the budget process. This transition has a few benefits. The first is that capital equipment is funded through the capital equipment plan reserve, which is funded through the operating budget. This means that items put forward for purchase through the capital equipment plan have funding set aside. And so costs related to capital equipment plan purchases will not affect other projects presented during the budget process. In addition, approving capital purchases ahead of the rest of the budgeting process allows for earlier equipment ordering, which supports asset management planning, which Cody will elaborate on during his presentation. That said, Mr. McNair has done exceptional work since starting at the county earlier this year. He will present the majority of the information on the twenty twenty-five capital plan today. While I will be here to support him with any historical context that may be required.
Morning Reeve, council.
Good morning Reeve and council. I'd like to start out by first acknowledging Mrs. Von Merbach, Mr. Isaac, Mrs. Kylie Cunningham, Mrs. Cochrane, and all the capital equipment plan managers and supervisors. Over the past seven months, I've inundated them with countless questions to get up to speed with everything we do here at the county and how our fleet assets are used to deliver services and maintain infrastructure. Their support and insights have been critical to develop the twenty twenty-five capital equipment plan. Today, we will begin by reviewing the capital equipment plan funding strategy and the reasoning behind bringing it forward ahead of budget deliberations. Next, I will go through the asset management framework and explain how the CEP fits into each component of the process. We will then explore the concepts and consequence of failure, condition, and risk, and how these metrics impact decisions on asset replacement, asset removals, and new asset purchases. Following that, we will dive into the CEP, which is organized into asset profiles. This grouping method allows us to manage assets with similar costs, life cycles, and uses more effectively. Finally, we'll move into the summary portion of the presentation covering profiles, budgets, and annual contributions. The capital equipment replacement funding strategy ensures that we are prepared to maintain or replace key municipal assets in a structured, financial, sustainable manner. It allows us to proactively plan for years with numerous high-cost assets when numerous high-cost assets need replacement, helping to minimize the financial impact on the operating budget. By spreading out these expenses over time, we can better manage our resources and avoid sudden budgetary strain. We have accomplished this by establishing a lifecycle replacement schedule for each asset type. The current replacement cost is then divided over the asset's entire lifecycle. For example, an asset with a replacement cost of a hundred thousand dollars and a lifecycle of ten years require an annual contribution of ten thousand dollars to the capital plan reserve. The recommended yearly contribution is the sum of all individual annual contributions amounts across asset types. We also update the replacement cost and contribution amount annually to account for market changes and inflation, ensuring that the plan remains financially sustainable and aligned with current economic conditions. So why are we separating out the CEP from the budget deliberations and asking for early approval? Over the past four years, unpredictable delivery times for assets have forced the county to operate equipment beyond their optimal lifecycle. When delivery times have started to stabilize, while delivery times have started to stabilize, there's still significant unpredictability. To mitigate this, beginning the procurement process early in twenty twenty-five will allow the purchases to arrive earlier in the year. allow the purchases to arrive earlier in the year. This is especially crucial for high-value assets like graders, where warranties expire at ninety-five hundred hours of operation. For example, if a grader delivered in February twenty eighteen is due for replacement in twenty twenty-five, and the replacement doesn't arrive until November, we risk exceeding the warranty limit. Any major maintenance beyond ninety-five hundred hour threshold would then have to be covered by the county, increasing potential maintenance costs. Today, we are introducing the twenty twenty-five capital equipment plan. Next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, we will answer any ongoing questions from today and bring back revisions if needed. And then we are looking for council to make a decision. If the CEP budget is approved, we can begin bids and tenders starting September twenty-fifth and start ordering assets in October, result being that some assets will be arriving in quarter one of twenty twenty-five. This is the asset management framework as defined by the Institute of Asset Management. I'll walk you through each component and explain how the capital equipment planning process aligns with them. We begin with our organizational strategic plan, ensuring that its goals directly guide our capital equipment strategy and planning. For instance, one of our pillars of our strategic plan is high-quality infrastructure, which emphasizes the need for sustainable management of existing infrastructure. To meet this objective, our fleet must continue to operate efficiently to support and maintain county's infrastructure. Additionally, it's crucial to continuously evaluate the role of each asset to ensure it delivers value and lines with the overall goal of providing and maintaining high-quality infrastructure. When an asset is no longer supporting the goal providing, of providing high-quality infrastructure, it may need to be replaced with one that has different capabilities or even removed from the fleet entirely. This ensures that every asset continues to contribute effectively to the county's objectives. Another important goal is maintaining a high-quality road network. Since road maintenance is a key service for the county, we must ensure that our fleet is properly equipped to uphold this standard. This goal directly impacts our decision-making for transportation assets, which accounts for seventy percent of our annual contributions, highlighting their critical role in sustaining infrastructure and services. Asset management policy falls within the next component, strategy and planning. Our current policy precedes the strategic plan and will need to be updated in twenty twenty-five. The current policy focuses on data collection and asset management decision-making. Our asset management capabilities have outgrown the current policy. An updated version is required to align with the current strategic plan and guide the further implementation of asset management. The funding strategy portion of the capital equipment plan falls under strategy and planning as well. Next component is asset information. This is the base of asset management, where we gather information from the existing capital equipment plan, shop records, and staff, which was then consolidated into our asset management systems citywide. We began linking other systems like document management, GPS vehicle locations, and GIS Risk and review considers each asset's value, consequence, and failure, general condition, and risk. Meetings were held with each capital equipment plan stakeholder. Three examples of questions that I asked them were regarding this asset, how often is it used? What tasks does it use to complete? And what would be the operational impact if this asset was out of service for two weeks? Through these questions, we were able to identify the operational value of each asset. Value is defined as the benefits or outcomes that an organization derives from its assets in alignment with its strategic objectives. So throughout the presentation, when I'm talking about value, I'm talking about the operational value it provides in delivering services, not necessarily its monetary value. This slide illustrates how we calculate risk in asset management using a simple formula. Risk equals condition multiplied by the consequence of failure. We use this formula to prioritize assets that need attention, helping us make informed decisions about maintenance and replacement. The interviews with each CEP stakeholder allowed us to create a baseline for condition, consequence, and risk for each asset. The condition of this asset is scored on a scale of one to five, with one representing asset in very good condition, and five indicating very poor condition. The consequence of failure is also scored from one to five, based on the impact its failure would have on operations. A score of one means insignificant impact, while five indicates a significant impact on operations. And as we progress through asset management, our assessment of consequence of failure is going to become more sophisticated, so just because we had to deal with all the assets all at once, we did it based on operational impact. But the reality of assessing consequences, we want to look at the financial impact, the operational impact, and other, other things to look at it.
Go ahead, Counselor Forbes.
So if I'm looking at this screen right now, the picture that's on the right-hand side, is this the result of what this picture is, are we talking about this piece of equipment here, is that what that's for?
Yeah, this is just a hypothetical example, and I'll use, I'll use the back truck as an example throughout. But in a, in a preceding slide, you'll notice that the condition changes, so we're just, we're just using it as an example here, just to give context.
Okay, so can I request, when we move forward and we're actually talking about our equipment, could I request what it's used for and how often we use it as well? Because I've spoken with a few different counties and they give that information. Like, I just need to know where we're using it at.
Would you like that information for every asset?
I would, yes.
Okay, I can probably provide that in a Excel format. So in this example, we have a back truck with a condition rating of four, meaning it's in poor condition with a consequence score of four, meaning its failure would have a major impact. When we multiply four by four, we get a risk score of sixteen, which places the asset in the high-risk category. Assets with a high-risk score require prompt action, whether that's repair, replacement, or increased maintenance to mitigate potential operational impacts. In this alternative example, the same back truck is in good condition, leading to a low risk score, no action is currently required. In this next example, we have a half-ton water utilities pickup, which is relatively standardized across our departments. In the event of a failure, a water operator can temporarily use another half-ton truck from a different department. The ability to utilize a different asset in the event of failure significantly reduces the consequence of failure. Even though the truck's condition is poor, the overall risk score remains low at eight, classified as low risk. Compared to the first back truck example, we can see how the consequence of failure plays a significant role in determining the overall risk score. With the other key components reviewed, we were then able to review the final component, asset management decision-making. Risk and review allowed us to realize the lifecycle value of each asset and identify assets that could be removed from the capital equipment plan. Identifying assets with a high consequence of failure prompts managers to develop out-of-service strategies to mitigate the impact and reduce overall consequence of failure. Resourcing strategy refers to the process of ensuring all necessary resources, particularly funding, are available to support asset management objectives. It involves planning and allocating budgets to ensure that there are enough financial, human, and operational resources to maintain, repair, or place assets when needed. A well-executed resourcing strategy ensures, ensures that assets are managed efficiently over their lifecycle, and that there are no gaps in the availability of resources to support critical infrastructure. Capital investment decision-making is the process of evaluating and prioritizing investment in assets to ensure long-term stability and effectiveness. It involves making informed decisions about when and where to allocate funds for, for the purchase, maintenance, or replacement of assets, based on factors such as asset condition, risk, and operational needs. This helps ensure that the organization has a stable and reliable funding plan in place for its critical assets, preventing unexpected costs, ensuring sustainability of services After going through the, all the components of the asset management framework reviewed in previous slides, we were able to complete the asset management decision-making process for individual assets. After classifying the consequence of failure and analyzing asset usage, we are also able to identify assets with lower operational value. In this real example, the heavy-duty egg tracker, tractor has seen a reduction in usage compared to previous years, and the consequence of it being out of service for two weeks was minor. These two factors prompted, prompted further investigation. Similarly, the maintenance department has a tractor of the same class that is also underutilized. To optimize resources, we can dispose of the egg tractor and have both departments share the maintenance tractor, thereby increasing its overall value and utilization. The financial impact of the decision is explained later on in the asset profile section, heavy-duty equipment.
Counselor Forbes.
So because I sit on the ASB board, I'm just curious as to why we always remove stuff out of ASB and not the maintenance department?
Through, through the chair, in this case, it was determined that the maintenance tractor was in better condition, and that's why egg department maintenance had chose that one. They're both have the same capabilities and similar engine size. I can't speak to other removals from ASB.
Well, just here's what I was saying.
Yep.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, through the chair, just to jump in on the question from Counselor Forbes is that the ASB or the eggs and services department, they try to maximize the equipment. The fleet is the organization's fleet, so we try to share the equipment or maximize those opportunities in the background to ensure those service levels are delivered. So for example, if we, most of our work happens in the summer and we require that piece of equipment for the summer, we work collaboratively with the other departments to ensure that we can schedule that equipment to be used, rather than have duplication. And it's just a level of effort and scheduling that goes on in the backward, background to ensure that we maximize the opportunity of those equipment.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, and just to clarify, the egg department will still, and Parks will still have access to this tractor, so the maintenance tractor is now becoming a shared asset between the departments, they're not losing access to this, to this resource.
Yes, go ahead Reeve King.
So it appears to me, from what you're telling us in this, as relates to this tractor, that really the one that was in the Parks and Egg side, according to the information that you provided here, is mainly used for ditch mowing, and my understanding is most of the ditch mowing that Parks and Egg are doing would be happening about this time of year, and mainly on low-use roads or in areas where we're not seeing a lot of travel. And so, to me, like, if we could share an asset like that, whether we chose to save the Parks and Egg one, or we chose to save the maintenance one, if we can save some money on replacement costs and, and get better usage out of that, makes a lot of sense to me. And so, the scheduling, from my point of view, the scheduling shouldn't be all that difficult, because during the summer, the maintenance guys are doing ditch seeding and whatever kind of work they're doing in terms of a little bit of road maintenance, packing back over culverts or whatever it happens to be. So I support this kind of decision, where we start to share assets. The ones that I'm questioning a little bit more coming up in your presentation later, which is about lengthening the life of some of those assets, so I'd be interested to see where we go when we get there, so, this makes good sense to me, so, thanks.
Counselor Forbes.
It makes good sense to me as well, Reeve. The only reason why I'm questioning is, is because sometimes I feel, and I've had this comment from a few of the rate pairs that I've spoken to, it appears as if the county's going out of the service department of this and going more away from the egg part, and this is just a question I had, so that's why I brought this question forward.
Reeve King, yeah, and I don't think, I'm not questioning the motivation for why we might do something differently here, and I think if you look at our service model from a road maintenance and ditch mowing, we've amped that up, like, the service level that we're providing on the Parks and Egg side from a ditch maintenance and weed management point of view, we, we've really amped that up, but we've done it through a contractor rather than our own service. And so, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the fact that we might have less use on the Parks Egg side for our ditch mowing tractor because of what we've done on the other side of the equation, which is to amp up the amount of contracted work that we're doing in terms of ditch maintenance and mowing. But we haven't changed our weed spraying program, we've changed the chemistries, and we've changed the ability to control weeds in that side, but we've really amped up our service on the mowing side, and so, so, yeah, so, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're, we're making some decisions like this, so.
Counselor Forbes.
The project that the ASB made, it was on a pilot for two years, which means that after next year, we have to determine as a board whether or not we're going to move forward with that. So this is my only concern with getting rid of this tractor from the egg side.
Yep. Yes, Ms. Cochran.
Thank you, through the Reeve. I think the point here is about reducing redundancies in our equipment, and I think if we just change the, if we flip the titles on, we're getting rid of the maintenance one versus the egg one, it's really about reducing the redundancies, and the reason why Cody had implied the egg one would be the one that we would sell is because that one isn't as good of shape. So it's really about reducing redundancy in our equipment and sharing our equipment as opposed to everybody needing their own piece of equipment. That's the main point, so it's not reducing any service levels at all.
Well, from way, the way I see it, rather than have two tractors sitting there waiting to get used, might as well have one sitting there waiting to get used. So whether the egg side needs it, they get it, if the maintenance side needs it, they get it. But there shouldn't be an issue with scheduling, because mowing happens later on in the year, maintenance generally happens through the summer, so, I think it's probably a good, good solution not to have two tractors sitting there and neither one being used, so. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, through the chair. As the presentation goes forward, I just want counsel aware that these are fiscal conversations we have in the background, this is a program that we're designing. So some of these scenarios here ha- have happened in the past and happen regularly within our operations team and within our fleet. So when he explains the program, these are more formalizations of how things are looked at, so council could really understand how these decisions are made. So when we concentrate on the actual presentation, it's more in essence of the program, and I do understand the concerns that we have within the scenarios that are brought up, but it's the asset management, how we manage the complete portfolio as, as per se, and, and how we work together to ensure those service levels are being maintained through that program and ensure we're being fiscally responsible at the same time.
Okay, well, continue please.
So removing the egg tractor from the CEP would have the following results. The maintenance tractor would have increased operational value and increased usage. The consequence of failure would increase from minor to moderate due to the lack of backup, having a backup tractor. However, when meeting with the two department leaders, this change in the level of consequence deemed, was deemed reasonable and manageable. There would be a decrease in CEP contributions as a result of funding one assets instead of two. Net proceeds from the sale of the egg tractor would be returned to the capital equipment What I've presented so far is an outline of the process we went through this year in preparing the twenty twenty-five CEP. For the twenty twenty-six CEP, the following areas will receive additional focus in order to improve the CEP asset management process. Strategy and planning, we will review and update the asset management policy. Within the component of organization and people, we will improve procurement, supply chain management to decrease variability in asset arrival dates, and that's a big part of what we're doing here today. We will train CEP managers how to access and utilize data within the citywide system. The training will empower them to contribute to asset information updates, including adjusting the consequence of failure and asset condition ratings. Managers will also learn how to run reports and leverage asset data for operational purposes, allowing them to make informed decisions and support the ongoing management of the county's assets more effectively. By utilizing citywide, CEP managers can take a more active role in managing the lifecycle of assets and ensuring their contributions are aligned with county's strategic goals. Lifecycle delivery, we will develop a new work orders management system in citywide and collaborate in collaboration with the shop to ensure all maintenance data is directly linked to asset records. This integration will streamline access to critical data for lifecycle decision making and budgeting. Currently, maintenance data is manually imported, limiting the ability to generate comprehensive summary reports and make it difficult to fully leverage the data for asset management decision making. By automating this process, we will improve data accuracy, reporting capabilities, and overall asset management efficiency. So so far, we've reviewed the CEP funding strategy and the rationale for separating the CEP from budget deliberations. Then we explain the process we followed to prepare the capital equipment plan with the asset management framework. Within this framework, we provide an overview of the key components we utilized, organizational strategic plan, strategy and planning, asset information, risk and review, and finally asset management decision making. Next, we are going to start reviewing the capital equipment plan divided into asset profiles. Are there any questions before we move on?
Counselor Forbes.
Just from a comment that you made, so if we currently don't have a way to properly track everything, how did you get the information for this report?
Through the chair. So currently, we have our asset database, which is in citywide, and then we have PM Expert, which is the maintenance side of things that the shop operates on, and it's a different software. So it's getting, it works quite well, but it's getting a little bit out of date, and we have the same capabilities within citywide. We don't have to pay any more money to use those capabilities. So we're going to transition from the old software, PM Expert, and, and build our own work order system within citywide. That way, those work orders are going to be linked directly to the asset. So when we look at the lifecycle and the contributions, once we have all those work orders linked in there, we'll also be able to look at the amount of time and money that we spend in maintenance. Right now, to export that data from PM Expert is quite onerous. We have to get it in PDF format, we have to convert it to Excel, and then we only get like a tiny fraction of the data to actually import into citywide. So once we have both programs operating under one umbrella, our capabilities are going to drastically increase, increase. And it's our intention to look at the CEP, the capital equipment plan, not only from purchase costs and contributions, but combined with the entire lifecycle costing. So what do we spend on fuel? How much money do we spend on maintenance tires? And combine that all together, and that's going to make our decision making far more effective because majority of the costs in asset management or when we're dealing with assets are actually over the operational, not the purchase.
So ultimately, what you'll come up with is the cost per hour to operate a piece of equipment.
Through the chair, that, that's correct, and for some assets, we do have that data.
Yep, but now it'll be more, there'll be more of that data put together.
Yeah, exactly, and then when we have a cost per kilometer, a cost per hour, then we can start to compare assets and try to figure out which strategy gets our lowest cost per hour, but still delivers the same service levels. And then obviously, you know, at which point that we sell that asset, whether we keep it for two years or for 10 years, that resale cost will have a huge impact on the hourly rate.
Counselor Forbes.
So will then this be implemented by the time we do budget talks for next year? How long before this is implemented, I guess, is the real question?
Through the chair, so we should have a working, we should have begun working with the shop and doing a portion of the work orders by next year. I can't say that we'll have it fully integrated. The shop is probably going to be the most difficult department to do work order system with just because they have the largest volume of work orders and the most complex, right? We have to consider inventory, parts, cost of fluid, cost of labor, and all of that. So it's going to be quite a big project in, in 2025. I will say that in the, in the, when I come back in 2026 for the capital equipment plan, I will have some sort of progress report and hopefully some, some useful data that we collected through the year, through that maintenance program.
I hope so, thank you.
Mr. Zier, I think I saw your hand pop up.
Yeah, thank you for that. So through the chair, just to add to what, what Cody had mentioned here, asset management is a, a living item. It, it, it never has an end date. It's further refining the data that we get every year to make better decisions on, on replacement, repair strategies that we have. We've always had a strategy towards replacement. It just hasn't been as refined as we have pulled forward in the last year and a half here, and we see exponentially getting better data and better decision making off of that. Speaking about even the tractor decision on that, taking the time to actually do the analysis of those things is, is what asset management is so beneficial for, and looking at even tracking the, the sales of these equipment, what's the best time to sell them? With like all of these things that we ran our best management practices on, we actually are obtaining the data to prove that out to counsel here now. So we've always run these programs with the data we have available, and now we actually can quantify it with, with true figures on it, so.
Okay, I don't see any more questions, so please continue.
Within this presentation, we will show you every profile that has an asset replacement, removal, or new, or new asset. Profiles that have no changes in 2025 are not included in this presentation. So on to the example, each profile will have two slides. The first is the current profile, which shows the assets within the profile as they exist today. The photos show the number of assets the county currently has for that asset type. Within the table of the slide, in the top left-hand corner, shows the total assets for the profile, which in this case is 31. To the right, that total number is broken down into the asset types. Total historical cost is the sum of the original purchase price of all the assets in the profile. Total replacement cost would be the cost to replace all the assets in the profile today. Historical and replacement costs are used solely to compare the change in cost of the assets throughout their life cycles. Annual contribution is calculated, annual contribution is the calculated contribution amount to the capital equipment reserve each year to fund the replacement of all the assets in the profile. Lifecycle is the number of years we use an asset before replacing. Condition range is the metric we use to assess the condition of the assets. As we move forward with asset management, we will use metrics like engine hours and kilometers to assess condition, as it's often more accurate than age. You will notice that in some profiles, condition range has already been updated based on hours or kilometers. The second slide for each profile shows the profile according to the proposed changes as part of the 2025 capital equipment plan. Replacements are the assets that are at the end of the lifecycle and will require replacement purchase. The replacements of an asset has no effect on total replacement cost or annual contributions. The number of replacements are represented in the yellow on the asset photos. New assets are assets that are not currently a part of the CEP and will be added as new assets. These will increase the total replacement cost and annual contribution. These additions to the CEP are represented in red numbers. Removals are assets that will be removed from the CEP and no longer funded. This will decrease the total replacement cost and annual contributions. These subtractions from the CEP are represented with green numbers. For some assets, the decision has been made to change the lifecycle. In this example, it was realized that snow speeders tended to be good condition at the end of 50 years. It was determined that by extending the lifecycle by 10 years, the risk would not rise significantly, and it would be more cost effective to operate it for longer. Lifecycle, lifecycle changes are indicated with a blue L. Total assets is the existing number of assets minus the removals plus new assets. Then, just like the current profile, we have the total replacement cost and annual contributions. To the right is the financial impact of new assets and removals. In this example, we are moving four assets and adding two new assets to the CEP. The net change in replacement cost is minus 5 million, and the annual contribution is minus 100,000. The budget lists estimated costs of all replacements and new assets for the asset profile as part of the 2025 CEP. Are there any questions before we move on to the real asset profiles?
Counselor Forbes.
Well, I appreciate the spaceship thing that you've done here. I've received three phone calls asking why we're doing it with spaceships.
Through the chair, yeah, that was just to make sure that, it was very clear that this was an example. Originally, I had used real assets the county had, and it had confused a lot of my colleagues, so it just, just for example purposes.
Yeah, and that's fair, but moving forward, maybe Tonka trucks or little dinky cars would have been more appropriate for what we do than space?
For sure.
Thank you.
The first profile is light duty vehicles consisting of 18 half tons and 10 three-quarter ton pickup trucks, three passenger SUVs, and three enforcement SUVs. These vehicles are typically used for transportation of staff to and from work sites, hauling tools, and pulling trailers transport light duty equipment. Pickups are fairly standard across our fleet, allowing us the flexibility to move them around as needed to cover critical tasks when a truck is down for maintenance. This also enables us to swap vehicles between departments, ensuring balanced usage throughout the fleet and preventing any single vehicle from being over or underutilized within its lifecycle. The total replacement cost is 49% higher than its historical cost.
Reeve King.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. In this list, does that include our leased as well as owned vehicles in the light duty?
Through the chair, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And because that's on a pilot program, they're considered, they're treated the same as our purchased vehicles because we're still funding them through the capital equipment plan until that trial period is up and we decide to possibly move into leasing them full time. Because we want to still make sure that we're contributing to the capital equipment plan in case that trial period ends and we decide to repurchase those vehicles.
Just as a follow-up, so then the assessment that you're doing around maintenance and all those costing or cost per hour is, you'll have a comparison on the leased vehicles as compared to the ones that we own, so we can make a, a good decision about whether we want to go leased or owned.
Correct, yeah, and we'll be collecting that data over the, over the next year.
Mr. Zier.
Thank you for that. Just to add a little bit to that, you, you'll write, Reeve King, we don't have the leased vehicles in here. They've just gone into operation right now, so we don't feel we've collected enough data on the use of them to make a decision on leasing for next year. So we're, we're putting off the, the decision on leasing for a year so we can gain a total assessment of, of benefits and pros and cons.
Okay, away we go again.
So the yearly contribution for this profile is 523,000, which represents 15% of the total yearly CEP contributions. Profile changes, we are replacing six half tons and one three-quarter ton. This profile is different from the rest because we are recommending that three of the half ton replacements are purchased and three are rented. I'll explain further on the next slide. The budget for this profile is three half ton rentals at $9,000 each, three half ton replacements at $84,000 each, and one three-quarter ton replacement $84,000 for a total budget of 363,000. There are three half tons, three, the three half ton trucks are currently only used for five months of the year, from May to September, due to seasonal staff. After calculating the cost of depreciation and maintenance, it was determined that renting these vehicles during this period will likely reduce overall cost. In addition to cost savings, renting these vehicles provides us with greater operational flexibility. We can adjust the number of rentals each year based on the number of seasonal employees. Additionally, if the employees leave early for the end of the season, we can return the vehicles early, resulting in further cost savings. We will have three less vehicles to maintain. The rental company takes on the financial risk of any major mechanical failures. If the first year trial is deemed successful, we remove the three vehicles from the CEP and fund them through the operating budget.
Go ahead, Counselor Forbes.
So I just have a couple of questions. How does renting reduce maintenance risk compared to owning the assets?
Through the chair, because if we own the assets, we're responsible for all of the maintenance. For example, if a transmission goes, we're on the hook for that. If transmission goes in a rental, rental vehicle and it's not deemed to be because of operator abuse, that's on them. And typically, every year, we're going to be getting new trucks, so the probability of having a failure in those vehicles is low. It's my assumption that if a vehicle went down for major maintenance, the rental company would swap out another vehicle right away if it was deemed to be on their side of things, their maintenance failure.
And my second question is, is what specific maintenance responsibilities will the rental company handle?
They look at, through the chair, they look after tires, oil changes, basically all maintenance except for anything that we would do to the vehicle. So if there was any body damage, that would be our responsibility, or for whatever reason the operator caused significant maintenance damage, that would be on, on our side, which with an owned vehicle, that would be on our, that would be our responsibility either way.
And when these vehicles are being maintained, may, have maintenance done on them, what is the driver doing? Is he working or is he sitting in a shop waiting for that to be done?
Through the chair, so the, the process would be the same where they would use another vehicle within the fleet or they do other tasks. I think the probability of a vehicle being down for a long period of time for a rental is lower than an owned vehicle because we operate them a lot longer, right? So we're operating our vehicles up to 160, 170,000 kilometers, and there is scheduled maintenance where they have to be down for several days. With a rental vehicle, typically, they're giving us newer vehicles that are in good shape, and the drivers are not going to spend many days doing other tasks.
Mr. Zier.
Just to add to, to that there, for council's aware, for committee's awareness here, we, we put a real focus on pickup trucks, analysis of, of our use of them this year, looking at what we have as, as a surplus or in the, the spare load, because there is some vehicles that are, are cycled between multiple drivers, so we want to make sure that we have enough to meet our service levels, but also not leave us too light that, that we have to, aren't able to complete our tasks on that. So with, with the, the use of these, if there is a rental that goes down, likely will be supplied with a, a replacement. Pickup trucks have been really scrutinized, as I mentioned here, for the use of them. That's why I think really this rental program is an ideal situation for a lot of our trucks that we do see historically sitting for a lot of the year here, depreciating without being put to use. So the fact that we can, we use, pull them out of our fleet, pull our, our mechanics off of them, not require service on those, really opens up our, our field to, to other piece of equipment, so.
Counselor Forbes.
Well, I guess what I was asking is, is like when the maintenance on these rental trucks have to be done, is the company coming to pick up the trucks or our worker is still out doing his job? Or is our worker driving it to this place to have it serviced? That's the question I've been asked.
Okay, go ahead, Cody.
Through the chair, so one of the rental companies that we're looking at, they work with, I believe it's Cal Tire in town here, so they're a registered maintenance company with the, with the rental company, so we just drive it down the street to Cal Tire. And majority of the time, it might be an oil change, a tire repair. We expect it to be very minor maintenance that takes a short amount of time, half day or a day, but that's obviously something that we'll evaluate through the rental program. If these rental trucks, we take them to Cal Tire and they're taking three or four days, that'll impact our decision to rent in the future or not.
Counselor Forbes.
And if that is the case where you're having that issue, will the rental company be able to, will we be able to get out of the lease that we're in if this is an ongoing thing that happens?
Through the chair, so these are, the, the rent, this is not a lease, it's a rental, so we're looking at actually a short-term rental where we're just paying per month. So we could be a month into the rental season and we could just, and then if the relationship's not working out, we could take those trucks back. So it gives us a lot of operational flexibility, and just like I had, I had mentioned prior, if for whatever reason, we have some summer staff that leave early or quit early, instead of paying for that truck to sit there for the last month or two months, we can take it back and then we save that monthly rental cost. So yeah, just lots of, lots of flexibility.
Counselor Christie, sorry, I'm here. The lease agreement.
The lease agreement is multiple vehicles and it's put out for tenders, I'm assuming. Like you know the job you want to do with three or four or five vehicles. That lease agreement would be for all five vehicles. So that gives it more flexibility probably on their side to say, yeah, we'll take one back. If you had individual leases, it's going to be a problem. We kind of looked at leases yesterday. The interest rate from, from franchise to franchise is a little bit staggering. There's eight percent difference in leases yesterday. So then my other question is to make sure that those lease agreements are shopped out to, to different lease companies to make sure we're getting the best deal. Because that's changing every day.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, absolutely. It'll be going out to, to bids and tenders, so we'll have the best option. Yeah, and just to differentiate, it's different from lease. It's more flexible where we're renting on a, on a monthly basis. It's more similar to when you go traveling and you rent a vehicle, where you determine the length of time that you're renting it for, as opposed to a lease deal where you're renting it for three years or four years and you have a certain amount of kilometers that you can, you can only use. There is a kilometer limit on these rentals, but they're, it's way above what any of our, our drivers do on a regular basis. So we have, it'll be five thousand a month. And I've talked to all the operators that I expect to use these rental vehicles and none of them will exceed.
That was one of, that was one of my concerns to make sure you're not over on mileage because that gets expensive in a hurry.
Yeah.
The other part of, of like big machine leases that were, that I see in agriculture, if you go over those set hours, it's really expensive really fast. And they'll actually, it's cheaper to rent five combines than four because you got to keep hours down on the floor. So you can actually have the fifth combine for almost nothing, provided it all works in those hours.
Go ahead, Reeve King.
So just clarify for me then, we have, excuse me, I have a frog here. We have some vehicles that we have on lease and then we have some rental vehicles. So we have rental vehicles for summer season and we have leased vehicles for a longer term usage. Just clarify that for me, if you would, please.
Through the chair. So currently, we have six leased vehicles. We have two that are on a two-year period and four that are on a four-year period. Currently, we have no short-term rentals, but we're proposing that we swap three of our own vehicles in 2025 for three seasonal rentals on a five-month period, maximum of a five-month period. It could be shorter than that.
Okay, so what you're clarifying here is we currently are in leased vehicles. We haven't done the rental program yet, but it's being proposed as an auction.
Correct.
So that we don't have vehicles sitting for the winter period doing nothing.
Through the chair, correct, yeah. And, and a big part of this is having half-ton pickups sitting for seven months of the year is, is less than ideal. It's actually quite hard on your vehicles to sit there all winter and not run. So this will reduce overall maintenance on our fleet.
Thank you. Okay, doesn't look like any more questions, so continue.
The next profile covers medium-duty vehicles, which includes one-to-three-ton trucks. These vehicles are more specialized than light-duty vehicles, resulting in lower annual kilometer usage. Additionally, they are built with higher quality, allowing us to operate them over a ten-year life cycle. The profile consists of one shop welding truck, one sign truck, four flatbed trucks, of which two have roadside sprayer attachments. One has a mobile pressure washer and one has a gooseneck hitch. The last type is the medium-duty dump box, of which we have three. This profile represents four percent of yearly contributions. Profile changes. We are replacing the sign truck, one dump box truck and one flatbed truck three years early. The flatbed truck is the only one that's being replaced early. Additional details will be on the next slide. To move the dump box from the existing truck to attach, and attach it to the current flat deck trucks has a budget of eight thousand dollars. The flatbed truck replacement, one hundred and thirty-six thousand. Sign truck replacement, one hundred and sixty-five thousand for a total budget of three hundred and nine thousand. The current Class III flatbed truck is being replaced three years early with a more capable Class V truck to meet increased towing capacity demands, improve driver safety, driving safety and minimize excessive engine wear. Due to its low mileage, we can repurpose the Class III truck by attaching existing dump box, eliminating the need to purchase a new one-ton dump box truck. In summary, a new Class V flat deck truck will be rep, will be purchased as a replacement. A new one-ton dump box truck that is due for replacement in 2025 will require a new purchase, will not require a new purchase. Instead, we will repurpose the Class III flatbed truck by removing the existing dump box and attach it to the flatbed truck, optimizing fleet and reducing costs. That's a very long-winded way of saying it. I hope that makes sense.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Cunningham.
No, no problem.
I was enthralled with the information.
I know, right? It's very easy to do. So I noticed we're not replacing the welding truck, but a question that came to me, so I guess just in terms of portfolio management, I would say for the welding truck, do we have a certified welder on staff? Or when we're using welding, are we outsourcing that?
Go ahead, Mr. Zier.
Through the chair. I, I, my apologies. I just noticed this in the, in the presentation yesterday. That, that truck is primarily used for service calls for mechanics. We had had a previous welder that utilized it, but we send that truck out for every service call that we do out for remote work. So that's the primary use of that truck.
Okay, continue, please.
The next profile, utility trailers, consists of two enclosed utility trailers, two dumps, seven flat deck, two tilt deck and one flat deck gooseneck trailer. They are typically used for hauling tools, material and small to medium-sized equipment. Utility trailers account for less than one percent of the total annual contribution. Profile changes. We have one utility flat deck replacement and one removal. The removal is a utilities trailer that has low operational value. When utilities requires a flat deck trailer, an egg trailer can be used instead. You will notice as a result, the total replacement cost for the profile will decrease by twenty thousand dollars and the annual contributions will decrease by one thousand. Several trailers were scheduled for replacement this year. However, after discussion with CEP managers, it was determined that we could extend the life cycle of each trailer by several years. This trend has been consistent during CEP meetings each year. A decision has been made to formally extend the life cycle of all utility trailers from ten to fifteen years. The annual contribution difference does not account for the change in life cycle. The total budget is twenty-two thousand for replacement of one utility flat deck trailer. The next profile is gravel con trailers, consisting of five end dump, two belly dump, three super B and one water tanker pup. End dumps are used for stockpiling in the winter. Belly dump and super Bs are used for re-graveling roads in the summer. Water tanker pup is pulled by the calcium truck for dust control. Gravel trailers account for four percent of the total annual contribution. One belly dump is scheduled for replacement with a budget of a hundred and nine thousand. The next profile is semi-trailers, which consists of one lowboy trailer and one dry van. The dry van is utilized by the gravel crew for storing tools and shelter during the winter hauling season. The lowboy is used for moving heavy machinery. Semi-trailers account for less than one percent of contributions. We are replacing the lowboy.
Sorry.
Back to the other side, please. Just explain to me again with the dry one, what we're using it for?
So the gravel crew uses that as a shelter for coffee breaks. They have a generator in there. They run it and they connect it to heavy machinery to keep it warm. So it'll start in the morning and they have it as a tool shed. So it's a multi-functional asset.
It's one of the pieces of equipment that the construction crew uses to make sure that there are no thefts on site and that ultimately you just don't leave stuff laying around and put it inside, lock it up. It's safe for overnight or the weekend or what have you. And it's also a place to get out of the crappy weather and if crappy weather arrives.
Through, through the chair, correct. And they would use that for safety meetings as well.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, sorry. Okay, no more questions. We will move ahead.
So we are replacing the lowboy trailer five years early. Justic, justification for this is explained on the next slide. Life cycle for replacement of the lowboy will be extended to fifteen years compared to the current trailer, which is set at ten years. The budget for this replacement is two hundred and seventy-five thousand. The reason for the early replacement is that the current trailer is providing a lower operational value due to significant limitations. To haul a grader, a gravel ramp must first be built and the grader must be able to drive, which eliminates the ability to rescue broken-down graders from roadways. Additionally, the trailer cannot haul any of the heavy-duty trucks, further reducing its operational efficiency. The replacement trailer features a built-in winch, allowing it to pull undrivable assets onto its deck without the need for a built ramp. It can haul an additional twenty-two heavy-duty assets, whether drivable or not, significantly increasing its operational value and ability to recover broken-down equipment.
Counselor Cunningham.
So question on this one. So we're looking at a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar cost on this. From my understanding, this, it's a specialized thing to have a winch and to load these, whether it's a grader or heavy-duty vehicles. So my question would be, do we have staff that's trained in this? And then at the cost of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I know we do have local people, triple B trucking, people like that, that are able to do that. I'm just wondering, is, is it worth us to buy this? Like, I mean, I don't know how many times we would know in a year we'd need this, but, or is it more economical to just use a local contractor to do it? That was the question that I had.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Zier. I was do, I was doing some math here.
Thank you for that. Yeah, just to answer Counselor Cunningham's question there. We did analyze this quite a bit. As far as the use of it, we, we see multiple benefits in acquiring this piece of equipment, both for hauling every piece of equipment we actually own now, which is a huge benefit, especially if we have equipment that we need to move between sites. But a primary reason is, is safety. So we have multiple times, even in the time that I've been here, where we have equipment go down the side of the road, blocking roads, that sort of thing. Timely response to that, bringing equipment back to the, the shop for repair or into Calgary for repair. The, the cost of towing these, hauling these pieces of equipment is significant. So we did review that cost. But the safety of it, we've had times where we've had to rode some of this equipment back, risking damage, further damage to it or even loss of, of parts of it if there is a, a major failure. So multiple benefits that we see to this piece of equipment. Correct, there are contractors that we have utilized for this service in the past, but we feel we'd be able to do it more efficiently internally.
Counselor Cunningham.
So again, just back to my question, but do we have staff? Like, from my understanding, this isn't just, like, I'm just going out there doing this. Like, it, it is quite a specialized, you know, training for that. And then just from my knowledge, like, I don't know what your research show, but like, I think I heard like around a thousand dollars maybe. So when I'm looking at a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar budget, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of uses when we could be hiring somebody privately.
Yeah, I'm, I'm through the chair, sorry. Some of the, yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me identically, but some of the towing costs I've seen are significantly higher than that thousand-dollar value, so.
Well, after doing some math, I determined that it's about eighteen thousand dollars a year is what it'll cost us to use this equipment, plus we will have resale value at the end. If you look at it over a fifteen-year period.
I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, just because I know what I know. That's what I heard, is about a thousand dollars per trip, depending on distance, of course. And I guess I just, you know, we're talking a lot today about economic development. So I guess, you know, we talk about shop locally, shop local and using our local contractors. So just at a price tag of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I just, I feel it's a pretty, pretty big price tag and utilization of it, I guess I just question. And, and Ray Pears question as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Zier.
Yeah, thank you. And sorry, my apologies, Ms. Counselor Cunningham. I didn't answer your question about the staff training. Currently, we don't have staff that are trained or have the experience of this equipment, but we're planning on putting them through the training necessary to run that piece of equipment.
Counselor Forbes.
And what will the cost be associated with putting them through that training for this? And how many employees will you be training? Because you're not just going to do one. You'll need a backup or two, so.
My apologies, I don't have that cost at this time.
Sure, yeah.
So I, I think I know the answer to it, but currently, some of the equipment that we transport, like wheel loaders and that kind of stuff, we actually rode them down the road. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
So with this piece of equipment, we could probably save somewhere in Terreby, shipping them on a lowboy and getting them to site, maybe, maybe not any quicker, but with a lot, a lot less wear on them.
Through the chair, that's correct, yes. That's the plan.
Yes, go ahead.
Through the chair. And something that's not, I haven't mentioned or isn't in the slide is when we sell equipment, we can also haul the, these assets to the auction yard rather than paying somebody to do it. So that's an added benefit that was not mentioned. We hope that we don't ever have to use this asset for rescuing, but the fact is, we have to use it every now and again. But it is available for other uses and taking equipment out to sites that we're working at.
Okay, are there any other questions? Reeve King.
More a comment than a question. We all know that there are certain circumstances where we're not able to rescue our own vehicles, nor does it happen in a very quick and timely manner. So we all remember a certain incident on the Linden Road last year where we had a piece of equipment that this would never be able to rescue. However, had that piece of equipment broke down on the road and we were able just to winch it on to a trailer like this, our recovery time would, my guess is our recovery time would be quite a bit quicker. So there are circumstances where perhaps from a road rescue point of view, this might make sense. Other times, from a road rescue point of view, we're talking to somebody much more capable than what we have. So I, I hear the argument and I understand where we're going. These new-style trailers certainly, from a loading of equipment point of view, way, way easier to get equipment on and off and see lots of them at use in the industry now. So I, I get where you're coming from.
So the next profile is fire medium-duty vehicles, which consists of three bush buggy Type VII trucks, two fire rescue trucks and a fire chief SUV. Some of the older vehicles have a life cycle of ten years. All of the replacements will have a life cycle of twenty years. Fire medium-duty vehicles account for two percent of annual contributions. The council recently received a presentation from Ms. Grossfield and Mr. Marcellus regarding the purchase of two new Type VI bush buggies, which are shown here. The carbon bush buggy will be added as a new asset for the county. The current Type VII Three Hills bush buggy is listed for removal because it's being replaced by a Type VI, which is classified as a different asset type. The new Type VI is shown as a new asset. Due to low annual kilometers, the, the fire chief SUV life cycle has been extended from ten to twenty years. The next profile is fire heavy-duty vehicles, which consists of six fire engines, six tenders and two rescues. These vehicles carry heavy fire equipment, water, tools and medical supplies to emergencies. These assets account for fourteen percent of the annual contribution. There is one scheduled replacement, which is the Linden fire engine with a budget of one million forty-five thousand. The county currently has a spare engine that is no longer funded through the CEP. It was originally kept as a backup while multiple fire engines were being built. The spare engine has very little to no operational value and is not being utilized as a spare recently. We are recommending the disposal of this fire engine.
Yes, go ahead, Reeve King.
So, are we, I guess my question relates to this spare engine and its disposal. Are we thinking selling it? In the past, I know we have donated some of this out-of-use fire equipment to a program that relocates them to other countries, and they get used there, so I'm just curious whether we're thinking of a fire sale through auction, or whether we were thinking moving it through a program like we have in the past where it's donated, and then somebody in another country gets the benefit of that piece of equipment?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Gannon.
Through the chair, if you wouldn't mind waiting a few minutes. I've just asked Ms. Grossfield if she's okay from coughing, if she can actually come back in and answer that question for you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, so we will continue until that happens.
The next profile is light-duty equipment. This includes five ride mowers, one forklift, a UTV skid steer, one soil compactor, a tool cat, and a utility tractor. These assets are used for a wide variety of tasks, some of them being moving material, small-scale construction, landscape maintenance, snow removal, and worksite cleanup, to name a few. This profile accounts for 3% of annual contributions. We are changing the life cycle of mowers from five to seven years. The newer fleet of mowers are anticipated to have a longer useful life than past mowers. There is one new asset being added to the CEP. Currently, we have a crack sealer that is not funded through the capital equipment plan. We're looking to purchase a new crack sealer and add it to the CEP. Further information regarding this new asset is on the next slide. The addition of the new asset increases total replacement costs by $103,000 and annual contributions by $10,000.
Do we want to go back? Yes, we do. Mr. Gannon. Well, I guess Ms. Grossfield.
Good morning, council. I understand the question was whether or not we would donate the old, the spare engine. Due to the cost of all the vehicles going up, including fire vehicles almost tripling, we think that we should be selling it, just because we think that we would get a fairly good dollar for it, whereas in the past, we might have got like, I don't know, $30,000, $40,000, but this one, I think, would fetch quite a bit more than that, so we're recommending to sell it and put the rest, put those proceeds back into SEP.
Go ahead, Reeve King.
So just as a follow-up question, then, the anticipated value that we feel might be in that piece of equipment, ask, yeah, see, that's why I'm questioning, you know, if we got, if we got $60,000 as opposed to $30,000, does that change enough that it's maybe, I guess I look at it in terms of what happens to that piece of fire equipment within our system, is if it's no longer useful, it's no longer useful. I know that the life of them gets extended massively in that donation program where they go somewhere else, and so the only reason I raise that question is, is ultimately, the value to us as a county, if it's minor, is the value of that piece of equipment to some other organization in potentially another country much higher. And so I guess I'm just weighing those two things going, you know, if we got 60 instead of 30, is that enough to make it a difference? If we got 100 instead of 30, is that enough to make the difference? And so that's the only reason I'm raising that question. I'm just, I know the value of that piece of equipment relocated is extreme for the people who get that piece of equipment.
Yeah, through the chair, absolutely it is. And that program still exists, like, our last trucks went to Paraguay, both of those, and they were so very appreciative. And it's definitely something that we can look at when we come to disposal options, for sure, and we can definitely research that.
Go ahead, Reeve King.
So I would appreciate that, because I think that, you know, unless the value is extreme to us, I just think that there's potential, another use for that piece of equipment that might have much greater value in terms of long-term service somewhere else, and so unless it's a big, big difference, I'm questioning the sale of it, I guess. And that's just me, it's not all of council, but I just, I'm very interested in that program, and I thought that the other two pieces of equipment, like you said, were extremely appreciated by the people who received them, so...
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, through the chair. With the information provided by the REVE, I believe that our team can go back and present some options back to council for consideration, so we can actually have a defined program in place, so we understand parameters of potentially this program moving forward, so consistency. Therefore, our asset management will understand what we do with that asset in the future, if it's percentage, if it's cost-based, whatever that looks like for council, especially when it comes to the fire service equipment. That way, we can understand of those social programs for the better-good mentality aspect is taken into consideration, where it might not have its more of a financial usage base than service level on this area, so they can incorporate that better. So let my team go back, if you wouldn't mind, and we'll bring something back to council for consideration, and then asset management will know on how to move forward with those assets in the future.
Great, thank you. Oh, Counselor Penner.
Sorry, Ms. Grossfield. Deb? Deb, I have another question, sorry. 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 Well, you're here, I just asked.
Before you escape.
Yeah. And I'm not doubting your decision here, but in the past, we've been told that there is a benefit to having that spare around, just in case. And so are you feeling now with, we have right-sized, for the most part, the different departments, that there really is no need to keep that spare around?
Yeah, so as we've been replacing the tenders, we've also made them pumppers as well, and so now, almost every haul has two pumppers in it instead of just a water hauler. And so now, we feel comfortable in not having that spare. We haven't used that spare for almost a year. Only one department actually has been using that spare, and so it's taking up a lot of space, and we still have to have it pass a pump test every year. And so there's just those maintenance costs when you don't use it, it also sits there, and that's not, not good either. So yeah, that first year, we used it a lot, because we had four new trucks, and they were kind of going back and forth for warranty, and we used it a lot, but we've changed the strategy so that we actually have that pumping capability in those tenders now. And so we have a new tender in Torrington and Three Hills, and Acme's is being built right now, so...
And I'm also assuming that if we do have a engine go down, and it's a serious issue, and it'll be out of service for a while, they will provide, probably through remuneration, a truck to fill in the position that we're missing.
Yeah, absolutely. There are rentals available, for sure, it just depends kind of what vehicle is available at that time. But again, we operate on a very mutual aid basis, so again, our communities are quite close together, and so we can be pulling from those other departments, and even right now, we have a bush buggy out of service right now, and we already have notified the two departments that are around that one that's out, that they will be responding with the bush buggy if we so need. So like, we really act on, like, we use mutual aid for the fire service heavily, so...
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions at this point in time, dealing with the fire services side? Because if not, I've been asked to have a recess. No questions? We're in recess. Thank you.
Okay, we are back in session. It's eleven fifty-five and I guess we're back to wherever we were. Crack sealer?
Yeah, just to summarize, we're looking at the crack sealer, which is currently not part of the capital equipment plan, but we're asking that the replacement become funded through the capital equipment plan. And so the change in replacement costs for this profile will increase by one hundred and three thousand and the annual contribution by ten thousand. So a road crack sealer is used to fill and seal cracks in asphalt or concrete road surfaces to prevent water debris and other contaminants from infiltrating the cracks. By sealing these cracks, the road crack sealer helps to extend the life of the pavement by preventing further deterioration, reducing the likelihood of potholes and more excessive damage. This process is an essential part of road maintenance as it helps maintain the structural integrity of the road and minimizes costly repairs in the future. The existing crack sealer, built in nineteen eighty-four, requires a crew of four to operate and depends on two additional assets to operate, a flat deck trailer and a portable air compressor. The new model is completely self-contained and has a built-in trailer. The new model will only require a crew of two, allowing the other two staff members to serve as flaggers for traffic control, enhancing overall safety. Since our peace officers often monitor roadways where crews are working, their presence will likely be needed less as the flaggers will help slow traffic and reduce the need for speed monitoring. The new asset will significantly improve the quality of the road repair and work enhancing the preventive maintenance of roadways and extending the road estimated useful life.
Counsel Fobes.
I had a question on, I'm giggling because I love nineteen eighty-four crack sealers, so I can understand why you might need a new one. But I did get a question around this on how many kilometers per year do we use this crack sealer? And are we using it also or utilizing it within our hamlets?
Mr. Zier.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Through the chair. Off the top of my head, I don't have the exact kilometers. I can obtain that by the end of the meeting here. We utilize that for all of our paved surfaces as well as our seal coat roads, keeping the moisture out. It fully extends the life of these infrastructure spot cases. I'd say we use it in the hamlets. We don't have a full program, I don't believe, for seal cracking throughout the hamlets, but because a lot of the cracking you see in there is more ravelling, like actual, not transversal cracks, but actual failure of the entire structure there where we have to do a patch rather than the sealing.
Counsel Fobes.
And of the ones that we are doing on a road, are we contracted by the province to do any of their roads within our county?
Through the chair, no. Yeah, through the chair, the provincial highways as well as our two access roads for Huxley and Swalwell are all under the maintenance of the upward transportation.
Reeve King.
Just as a comment and to help you out, Mr. Zier, we have fifty kilometers paved and thirty kilometers of chipped seal. It's in our little handy council fact sheet. There you go.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Zier.
Thank you. And just through the chair, I don't believe that we crack seal every road every year. We kind of cycle through. I believe we do half the roads one year and the other, but I'll confirm that for council.
No other questions? We shall continue.
The next profile is heavy-duty equipment consisting of two tractors, two soil compactors, three loaders, three dozer/crawler, three backhoes, and one landfill compactor. These assets are used for a variety of tasks such as large-scale construction, work removing, moving material, digging culverts and water lines, loading heavy-duty trucks with material, landfill site maintenance, and large-scale landscaping. This profile accounts for sixteen percent of our annual contributions. One loader is scheduled for replacement. There are three removals for heavy equipment, the first being the egg tractor we discussed earlier in the presentation as an example. The second is a soil compactor, of which we currently have two with the same capabilities. Operational for both of these soil compactors is moderate. It was identified through the risk and review phase that maintenance can operate sufficiently with one without increasing the consequence of failure to an unacceptable level. Both assets will be sold. Revenue from the sales will be contributed back into the CEP reserve. The third removal is a track excavator crawler. This asset will be removed from the CEP but will remain in service. If it fails, it will not be immediately replaced. The total replacement cost for heavy equipment will be reduced by eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, resulting in an annual contribution reduction of eighty-seven thousand dollars. The budget for the one loader replacement is five hundred and ninety-three thousand. Our last profile is graders, which consists of eleven graders used primarily for gravel and dirt road maintenance. Graders account for thirty-one percent of our annual contributions. There are two scheduled grader replacements in twenty twenty-five, each costing an estimated seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for a total budget of one million five hundred and fourteen thousand. We have now completed the asset profile, phase profiles that have changed due to the twenty twenty-five CEP. Are there any more questions before we move on to the summary sections?
Sumaries, please.
Here is the summation of all the profile changes within this presentation that are part of the twenty twenty-five capital equipment plan. The total replacement has, replacement cost has increased sixty percent when compared to the historical cost. There will be a total of seventeen replacements, three new assets, and five removals, resulting in total reduction of two assets. The total replacement cost will be reduced by four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and an annual contribution reduction of sixty thousand dollars. The proposed budget total is five million one hundred and twenty thousand. Here's a summary of the budget. Our recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommend to council to approve a draw of five million one hundred and twenty thousand from the capital equipment reserve to fund capital equipment purchases for twenty twenty-five. This is the contribution summary broken down by profiles. Graders make up the largest portion at thirty-one percent, all by light-duty vehicles fifteen percent, fire-heavy duty fourteen percent, and heavy-duty equipment thirteen percent. These four profiles make up seventy-three percent of annual contributions. This graph shows the reserve levels based on expected withdrawals. In this scenario, the contribution amount each year is equivalent to the twenty twenty-four contribution amount of three point one million. In this scenario, a funding deficit is projected in twenty thirty-three. From twenty thirty to twenty thirty-four, there is low funding for emergency replacements or new asset purchases. The second scenario shows the reserve levels if the recommended contribution of three point six million is made each year. Administration recommends that the committee of the whole recommend to council to consider contributions of three point six million to the capital equipment plan reserve during twenty twenty-five operating budget deliberations.
I just have a question here. When we're looking at this graph of scenario two, we're not at, how much of a cost, inflation cost have we put into equipment from twenty twenty-six onwards? Or are we just pretending it's not going to happen?
Through the chair. So the way we deal with inflation is every single year we update the replacement costs based on if we were to replace it that year. So inflation is applied each year. So you will see that contribution amount increase each year when we come back to do the capital equipment plan presentation.
Okay, so we're taking into effect, well, I guess we're taking inflation into effect, but not the Canadian peso and all the other good things that happen with equipment and increases in costs. Sorry if I'm getting too deep into the crap here.
Through the chair, at this time, we don't project out inflationary increases on this graph. However, we also recognize that when we're looking at that trend line of where those balances are, that we're ensuring that it's at a level that will also accommodate some inflationary increases. And so then, as Cody was saying, every year we kind of look at where have replacement costs increased, and then we reflect the contribution to align with that as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Cody.
Through the chair. We ran scenarios applying inflation every single year. The problem with that is, is if you run your scenario over ten years and then you run another scenario over twenty, twenty years, your contribution amount on that twenty years is going to be a lot higher. So it's dependent on how many years you run it over. If we apply inflation every year to our capital equipment plan, it's more of a steady, steady funding, and we can look at five years, we can look at ten years, we can look at twenty years, and that contribution amount is going to stay relatively the same. When I applied it to twenty years, I believe the contribution amount was about five million dollars. So there's a, there's a drastic change.
Yeah. And I'm looking at this graph, and when you're looking at twenty thirty-five, there's nothing to say that it's not going to be over and above that green line. I mean, we hope it's not, but that being said.
Correct. We do, yeah, we do the best projection with the information that we have.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that. Sorry to get into that one, but Counsel Fobes.
On our capital equipment plan for twenty twenty-four, where are we for the actuals on it currently? I've been asked this question.
Through the chair, I don't have those numbers, but that's definitely something we can bring back to you unless Marika's bringing it back. Marika might be looking at it right now.
Through the chair, I just have the numbers as of June thirtieth. I haven't pulled them more recently, but when I start preparing the June or the September thirtieth Q three report, those numbers will be updated as to what they've been to that date. I can pull them and come back, like, respond back to you guys for next week? Absolutely, but I just have the ones to June thirtieth.
And they are?
They are, we, from the twenty twenty-three capital equipment plan purchases. So those were ones that carried forward due to delays in delivery. We'd spent two million fifty-eight thousand, and for twenty twenty-four ones, we'd spent nine hundred and ten thousand.
Sorry, last number was again?
Nine hundred and ten thousand we'd spent for twenty twenty-four capital purchases out of a total three point five million approved, or three point four.
Okay, thank you.
So at council next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, we will answer any ongoing questions from today and bring back revisions if needed. And then we are looking for council to make a decision. If the capital equipment plan budget is approved, we can begin bids and tenders September twenty-fifth. After that, we can order assets starting in October and start receiving assets in quarter one. That concludes our presentation for today. Are there any more questions?
Counsel Fobes.
What specific strategies are being implemented to mitigate risks associated with procurement delays, warranty expiries, and high usage of asset failures?
Through the chair, in regards to our procurement schedule, just getting approval on the budget earlier will give us more, will give the companies that are supplying the assets more time to deliver them to us. That answers part of your question.
Reeve King.
So I'm going to assume that if we encounter procurement delays, the old piece of equipment stays in service till the new piece comes? So we're not necessarily short of a piece of equipment if we run into a delay in our procurement?
Through the chair, that's correct. We don't ever get rid of equipment until the replacement arrives because that would result in a loss of service.
Okay. And then I had a question related to expected spend and contribution, and just, I just need you to give me some level of comfort. So we're going to spend five million one hundred and twenty thousand, and we're going to contribute three million six hundred thousand. And based on your long-term projections, it appears as though we will still be able to maintain our capital equipment reserves at a level that everyone's comfortable with.
Through the chair, yes. If the contribution amount that we recommend is made, then we'll be able to fund the capital equipment plan as we see it.
Okay, based on what your expectations for next year and the year after in terms of replacement?
Yeah, based on our, our projections for what replacements are going to be required over the next ten years.
Okay, because on the short term, in the next twenty-six, twenty-seven, our spends seem to be much higher than our contributions. So that's, that's the only reason for my concern is that as long as we have, and I'm relying on your expertise and our financial management side of things, in the next, you know, two to three years, it appears we're spending a lot more than what we're contributing. And then in the next few years after that, we're spending less than what we're contributing. So long, long run, what you're telling me today is that we should be all right if we go forward based on what you're recommending today?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, Counsel Cunningham.
So just two more email questions that I would like clarification on. I had some questions on the graders. Now, we replaced two graders earlier this year, is that correct? Or did I dream that?
Through the chair, I believe that's correct, yes. We've had a few graders, but a few of them were delayed due to delivery stuff in the last few years. So that's why. And they are on a seven-year replacement cycle, too. So we do regularly have graders come up for replacement in the budget process.
Okay, perfect. So that, that was, they were wanting a little bit more information about the lifespan of the graders. Can you guys remind me how many grader divisions we have again? Like, not council, but grader divisions?
Ten.
Okay, so we have, so do we have the eleven graders, one for each division, and then we have a floater, if I remember correctly?
Through the chair, that's correct. We have a roller, yes.
So just that we had some questions surrounding like the age of the graders, like the lifespan, like how, when, how many hours when we determine when we change them out, those?
Sure. So through the chair, we, this one, we have changed our strategy a bit in the, in the past few years here, where we, I've seen some major repairs, and council saw that last year we had hundreds of thousands of repairs that were unplanned. They're always unplanned, but, but these were significant, and they were on older graders that were nearing their, their ten thousand hour lifespan. So we investigated quite a bit and found an extended warranty, we can actually go through there, that is basically the cost of one of these repairs in this whole lifespan. So we get an extended warranty, we get everything covered, top to bottom, all the way through for ninety-five hundred hours, and it really costs about the same as one contracted repair on one of these graders. So we see huge value in doing that. It's really changed the way we approach these grader replacements. And that's where you see Mr. McNair here, really basing our strategy on that ninety-five hundred hours. That is what we're going to run them and make sure they're out the door before we, we hit that number. So we, we stay secure in our replacement strategy.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. And just to clarify, not all of our graders are currently on warranty because this is a program that was only started a number of years ago. So we do have graders that were purchased five, six years ago that are not on warranty. So we still carry that, that risk of having to, like, large maintenance cost associated with them.
Counsel Cunningham.
Okay, just one more for you. I don't see, like, you had a picture of a hydro vac, but I don't see that it's in a, it's not proposed for change, correct?
Through the chair. So that's one of the asset profiles that isn't, have an addition, subtraction, or replacement this year, so it's not included in the presentation.
Okay, because that would be a seasonal used item, is that correct? No? No, we're using it more? Okay.
Mr. Zier.
Thank you for that. I'll try and clean my mess up while I answer the question here. Through the chair, that, that, that piece of equipment is utilized year-round, not only for excavating lines throughout the year as we do work. If we do a culvert line, we excavate all the, the gas and utilities around there. We use it every year, a few times through the winter at least, for water main breaks, that sort of thing. It really cuts the frost, makes the holes that we dig in there much easier to, to access, that sort of thing. So very highly utilized piece of equipment year-round.
Okay, are there any other, any other questions? If not, I think we have a couple recommendations for council that we should probably deal with. All right, Reeve King.
Just for the sake of allowing continued conversation, I then would move that the committee of the whole recommend to council to approve a draw of five million one hundred and twenty thousand from the capital equipment reserve to fund the capital equipment plan purchases for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve a draw of five point one two million. Discussion. Counsel Fobes.
Before I can make a decision on this, I would like to get the information that I've requested, please. Thank you.
So would you like to table this item until later in the meeting? Or how would you like that? Can we get the information? No, we're not going to get the information until later in the meeting because we're not getting the information possibly until next council meeting. Is that correct?
Through the chair, I believe, I've noted every question throughout this presentation. There's a couple that could come back later in this meeting, but there are a few that will take some administrative time. but there are a few that will take some administrative time to respond back to, which is why we intended on bringing responses to questions back to next council meeting so that we had time to ensure that we had the proper information presented back.
Okay, so who is going to make, give me the idea of what are we doing with this then, Mr. Gannon? Okay, go ahead.
So, um, here's my thoughts on the matter. If we didn't make the recommendations to council from committee of the whole, we could still make decisions at council based on the information that's presented at the council meeting. So I could withdraw my motion, and we could leave the decision for the council meeting when the additional information is presented. And if everyone is in agreement with that, then I would, we could move forward, but.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you. Through the chair, the motion is just so council has the opportunity to consider it. We're not motioning to the effect that we're moving forward with the cost or the proposed, but to bring back the information back to council for consideration and adoption. So the information, if it's, if it's available and to the requirements of council and meets those requirements, then a motion can be made at that time to either adopt it or defer it. So those, those options are available for council.
Reeve King. So, because this is committee of the whole, we don't make any decisions regarding an actual spend. So all this really, if I make the motion that I made, one of two things will happen, or maybe both. First and foremost, if we agreed to make that recommendation to council, then we would be presented with the information at the council meeting, at which point in time, if there was something in that that we were not happy with, then we could alter or change the decision we're making at that point in time. So from my point of view, to make a recommendation to council does not mean approval at council level. So it's up to us as council to decide if we want to go ahead with making the motions to recommend. If we're not comfortable, and everyone here says, no, I'm not comfortable, then we can withdraw that motion and, and just leave it to the council meeting, so.
Counselor Patterson.
This is a recommendation, and I am happy with putting it forward. It keeps the process going.
I guess, is there? Ms. Vaughn Herbeck, you have stated that you've written down the questions. Will they, will you have the opportunity to present that information at the next council meeting? Or is there some stuff that is still not going to be available?
Through the chair, I believe everything can come back to next council meeting.
Okay.
There might be one or two that, really, I think the only one that might be longer is likely the sale of the spare fire truck. As that one is likely to come back through a specific RFD related to how that's gonna happen. And that won't be part of the motion to approve purchases in advance anyways. Like, we wouldn't sell that unit until council's approved how we want to get rid of that unit. Some of the details in terms of what assets are used, for what purposes, and how much, I believe we can do that on a fairly summarized basis, whether it's on a, each individual asset to very detailed. I'm not sure that that will be available by next week. But certainly on a high level, it's absolutely available to be summarized.
So the question that Counselor Forbes has asked will be answered at that Tuesday, or next Tuesday's council meeting. Are you good with that answer? All right, so what do we, what?
So I'm gonna leave my motion on the table then, and we'll have to decide.
All righty. So our motion will stand the way it's written, that the council, committee of the whole recommend to council to approve a draw of 5.12 million from the capital equipment reserve to fund the capital equipment purchases for 2025, with information coming forward at the next meeting. And I'm not changing the motion, I'm just ad-libbing into the motion. Okay, so is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, if not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We also have another recommendation to council. Counselor Patterson.
First of all, I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate the presentation you've made here. Yes, there'll be some tweaks to it going forward, and I look forward to the second vote next year, whatever. Asset management is, is new. It's not new, but it's, it's mandated, kind of, it's written in stone here, so we have to deal with this. So I love the way you've presented here, so thank you both, or whoever, all your other team that helped contribute towards this. And I would make that motion, that, the motion, sorry, that the committee of the whole recommend to council to consider contribu- contributions of 3.6 million to the capital equipment plan reserve during 2025 operating budget deliberations.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the table, on the floor, that the committee of the whole recommend to council to consider contribution of 3.6 million to the capital equipment plan. Is there any discussion to that motion? I see none, so I shall call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. I personally like the starships, but that's all right. I thought they were kinda cheap, but, you know, it is what it is. So thank you. I do appreciate, appreciate all the work that went into this, because there was a lot of work that went into this. And it's really helping us to make our decisions here, I guess. Reeve King, you had something?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add my thanks to that of the Deputy Reeves. And I very much appreciate your contribution, Mr. McNair, to our, to our conversation, and, and if you let me know where those used snow speeders are up for sale, maybe I'd be one of those people looking for one. But I think that this is, this is a new presentation in terms of the way it's been done. And I very much appreciate it, the context that it gives us in terms of being able to think around why we might want to change that piece of equipment at this point in time, or why we might want to consider extending the life of some of those pieces of equipment, and what's necessary as far as replacement, or maybe we don't need that any longer. So that's, that's, we've had that in the past, but not maybe as, as straightforward and as clear as perhaps today. So thank you for that. Very much appreciated, so.
Through the chair, thank you very much. Presenting the information to council, that's the most important part of the asset management process, and that you understand the information that we're putting forward.
Okay, so, uh, before we go on to the next agenda item, does anybody want another recess? Okay, that means we're going on to the next order of business, which is 2.2 bylaw, 1905 municipal development plan. Welcome, Ms. Hazelton, and thank you very much for your, for your presentation, and back to the, back to the grind? Yeah, back to the grind. Yeah, you did. Awesome job.
Thankful we have.
Okay, so we're there. Is your gap, your staff is in place? So anytime you're ready, Ms. Hazelton? Oh, you're still looking? Trying to find. I should probably find mine, too. You should have brought a coat, Deanna. Open the window. I gotta go on to the next one. There we go. So the Hogans have a dog, or? Oh, awesome.
Okay, good morning. Mister Chair, members of council. I just want to go back. I'm, I'm not gonna regurgitate all of the history that we've done many times in council meeting, but over the last year, administration has facilitated a robust public engagement that would provide council with rate pair feedback specifically relating to the municipal development plan. This draft document was prepared based on the feedback received from the working groups and presented to council on September 10th. At that point, council did request to bring the draft back to the committee of the whole for further discussion. So, again, we've highlighted in my presentation that I gave you on the 10th. I will pull that back up just to refer to. But we've basically highlighted the things that were changed through the working groups or additions that were made. Well, this is just being upheld today. All right. I don't know what's happening here. I almost feel like I need to start over. I, I don't know. It's just not.
Cable back down. No, I don't think that is.
It's, it's hooked into here. It's just going berserk. All right, I think you can put it here, but I'm not sure what's gonna happen. Anyway, we have included questions mainly targeting those working group sessions and the things that came out of that. However, as you guys are aware, there's pieces in the municipal development plan that were not specific, specifically discussed in a working group, and so those as well are up for discussion if there's any comments that you have on any of those sections as well. And I'm going to ask that we kind of do it as we go through the document to make it easier for us to capture notes and to make those amendments. I also have some information that council had requested, so I will pan that out as well. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Counselor McGee.
I, I was hoping I could ask if you could just give us a overview of the process before you get started of where we're going from here and where it's gonna end up.
Thanks, Carolyn.
It just helps me sort the information for the presentation.
Okay, so from back, I can go back through here. Okay, going forward. So at this point in time, this is completely a draft. There is no, first reading has not been done yet, and the public hearing has not been scheduled. So what we really want to make sure is we have a fairly, a document that council is very confident in when we bring it back for first reading. It doesn't mean there can't be amendments following that first reading, but we want to make sure that council does have a lot of confidence in the document as we present. Once we bring it back to council and you do first reading, we will schedule a public hearing. And at that point in time, we will officially forward it to all of our urban and rural municipalities. It will be on the website, and then anyone has an opportunity to provide comments. Anyone will have the opportunity to provide comments during that public hearing. And then council can consider amending the document prior to second reading, or they can choose to proceed as it is presented and go from there. The document does need three readings to be adopted, and so changes can occur at any point in between. Okay?
Okay, good to go.
So the, the very first category that I have is the agricultural category. However, if there's anything in the document prior to that agricultural sector, then we would like to be able to address any questions.
Counselor Forbes.
On page three, under community profile. Page three of this actual document. Under community, one, two, three, four, fourth paragraph down, where you have it located at a center of a high-volume grain and beef production area. Can we take out beef production and do confined feeding area? Because it seems like we're just promoting beef, and we have more than just beef in this county.
Okay. We, we do, we did capture the amendments that you guys requested during council. You will not see those reflected in the document attached, because we haven't had time to get it into the package and do that turnaround. So it'll come for your next council meeting.
Revised draft.
Yes.
Reeve King.
Yeah, just before, I just want to ask Counselor Forbes. Rather than making it confined feeding, because that's not specifically what we're about, and not just beef, could we say livestock? I think because we have, we have a lot of cow-calf operations, yes. We have some hog operations. We have some dairy. We have poultry. And I think when we say confined feeding, then that means chicken barns, that means hog barns, that means dairy barns, that means feedlots. Whereas if we just say livestock. Yeah, yeah. And I know that a lot of the policy that we have around confined feeding operations is very specific to those, but we have a lot of seasonal cattle and, and cow calf.
Correct.
And a whole bunch of other things that need to be captured in that as well. Alpacas and goats and sheep, and so, anyway, if that, if you're okay with that, I would suggest. Okay, thank you.
We've captured that. Is there anything else prior to getting into the agricultural? Okay. Okay.
The strategic plan is the highest order, sorry, I gotta put myself on here. The strategic plan is the highest order policy, which guides the organization efforts to help staff formulate the various recommendations. Can we include where this cost comes from as well in here? Because I think sometimes when we do strategic planning, people don't understand it, and I'm just trying to get clarity for the people that read this document. Because there is a cost associated with us doing this yearly, or every four years, when we open up the strategic plan. So I just am looking for some things in here. Yeah, I'll get, you know what, move on, and I'll come back to it later, and I'll get my stuff clear here.
Okay. Any?
Counselor Forbes.
So on page five, the municipal development plan review process. Can we include the year that this was done, so that anyone reading this document will know that we did it in what years we did?
Yes, and that will also be captured in the bylaw, because that's when it will be adopted.
I want it captured in here as well for people who read this, not just the bylaw. And then I also struggle with certain terminology such as should, would, may. Can I just get the clarity on why you have should reflecting the values?
Okay, those are legislated terms, and so shoulds or have-tos. May's or not. And so the legislation will tell you that you do have to have some things, and some things you, you can consider adding to your document, but they're not requirements.
Can you just clarify that again? Shoulds and?
Shoulds, and is mandatory, may's or not.
Okay, and may's or not. Thank you.
And we can actually clarify that in the document. We can add a little.
I just have had questions around that verbiage.
Okay? Okay.
Just a quick, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Tanner.
So like shouldn't, would, could definitions be underneath, definitions at the back for people to...
And we can, I'm not sure if we've got them in here. We, I think we do in land use, but we can certainly add them in.
Yeah, they're not in there.
Yeah, I'm not seeing them, but we will add them in.
They're not in the definition.
No. Thank you.
Okay.
I just, just for clarification here, on page nine, when it comes to intermunicipal planning and cooperation, we have adjusted the wording slightly, taken out through intermunicipal development plans and added intermunicipal development plans, intermunicipal collaboration frameworks, two of these many tools. So really, we haven't changed it. We've just added the ICFs as part of it too.
Correct.
Just so that our ratepayers understand that.
Yes. And there's more tools than this, but these are the two more planning-related tools that we utilize in that intermunicipal arena. So we did want to incorporate that.
Right, and this whole arena is, is really relatively new in, in, in politics, the last, you know, for the last six, eight years, so.
Any other comments before we get into it?
Okay. And if you think of something later, we can come back, but it's helpful for us as we move through to capture it in the actual section. So when it came to the agricultural discussions, as we talked about, we did talk about the number of subdivisions that are allowed, the consideration of land suitability ranking system when defining land, and specifically more in utilizing that system when it comes to non-agricultural development applications versus the CLI. And so that is a bit of a philosophy change. We've typically used the CLI, but we are seeing the land suitability ranking much more robustly used throughout other departments. And it, it is a little bit more encompassing data set. It does consider more things because we're talking about landscape, climate, solar, soil information. And so we are, it does pull in a little more than the CLI's did. However, we are going to maintain the CLI's when we deal with the municipal reserve, school reserve side, because that's the lands that are tracked currently and where we get that market value from. So we are still going to utilize those. So again, you will see that, and then there were quite a few discussions regarding ways that the county could be supportive in agriculture. And so you're going to see a lot of those comments reflected in the draft itself. Everything that is new is in red to make it really easy to capture. And then some of the things are maybe not a new, like the subdivisions numbers were not new, but we are, there's some things that we've added to the municipal development plan that aren't necessarily a change in philosophy, but it just captures a little bit more documents in here. So again, when we review the number of parcels, there was not a lot of pushback anywhere on the number of parcels. And to keep it at that three, it doesn't stop somebody from applying for a country residential development, which would go through that redesignation, public hearing process, and would allow them to have five parcels on their title. But we are looking at those more case-by-case, very specific, and we will touch on that a little bit later in the document. So really, on the AEG lands, it was maintaining that three subdivisions, and I hadn't heard any problem with doing that. Okay? Sure.
Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
I would like to see that it's, that it's within our county. I find it really uncomfortable to consider whether or not in the quarter section, whether it's starland or any, I find that an uncomfortable thing to go to, and I don't think we have a right to rule on that necessarily because there might be a whole different circumstances across the border that we don't understand. Or they might allow five, so then how does that affect a decision? So I'd like that to somehow state that within the Neill County.
Okay.
Boundaries?
Okay.
Reeve King.
So just help me out here, Counselor McGee. The municipal development plan that we're talking about is specific to Neill County. Does, none of the rules or the definitions or direction that's within this document applies to anybody other than Neill County? So I'm just wondering why we'd want to specify in here that it's specific to Neill County? Because this is specific to Neill County. So just help, help me out there.
So am I, are you suggesting maybe, Counselor, that Reeve, that we don't need that here, but I'm talking more of a land use?
Go ahead.
Maybe I can clarify, because we did have one, that we had a quarter section bisected by the river. And under the Municipal Government Act, how that quarter section is defined is that whole quarter, whether it falls into two municipalities or not. So that became a little bit of our challenge because we were over our numbers on the Neill County side if you included that entire quarter. That was straddling another municipality. So if that's something council wants to consider, it is a little bit of a break from the, how it's defined through the Municipal Government Act, but not outside of your realm to do it. The other thing, again, that's something that you guys are given extra authority to step outside of the normal rules of the land use bylaw when it comes to subdivision if it's not going to unduly impact adjacent landowners or interfere with anything. And that's granted to you through both the Municipal Government Act and the land use bylaw. So if you find you're stepping in that arena a lot, then I think it warrants having that conversation when we deal with the land use bylaw and how we define quarter section and saying that if, if it falls within two municipalities, we would only consider it in ours, what's happened on our side. But if it's a one-off on a very rare occasion, then you are exercising that extra authority that you have been granted to step into. So, and we always warn you when we come to you with an application like that, that warning's maybe not the right word, but we, we make you aware that you are now deviating from the normal in the land use bylaw, and you are stepping into that extra authority you've been granted. So again, it's, it's up to you how you want us to move forward with that, but, and, and we're, we're willing to go either way.
And in a situation like that, the adjacent municipality would have the ability to provide comment.
Correct.
Reeve King.
Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming, Counselor McGee, we're referring to item number eight in the policies. So you're suggesting that somewhere in there, we should be identifying Neill County. In our document, the county is, refers to us. So we could just say three titles per quarter section in the agricultural district, or, sorry, the maximum number of titles per quarter section within the agricultural district in the county shall be three. And then that just specifically then answers what you're trying to get at. And because we use that language elsewhere in here, then it's acceptable. It's not acceptable, it's consistent then.
That's what I would prefer, yes.
Okay, so we will, only including lands within Neill County?
Yeah, and then that, that solves the problem when it comes to land use bylaw changes or whatever as well, I would think.
Okay, we can, we can amend that, but we also will need to do that in land use as well when we get to that. So we'll highlight that there.
That would be great. And one of the reasons is, I know it's not coming regularly, and it's hard to make a change on that, but in my opinion, that's one of the reasons why maybe the clarity needs to be there is if it's not very often, people don't understand or know the history. And so to have some continuity about how we assess that, I think is really a positive thing.
Mr. Gannon, you had a hand up.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I'd like the committee's indulgence here that as we go through the document, as we look at making amendments, we want to make sure that there is a consensus or understanding of those changes. We want to make sure that whatever changes, the rest of the council agrees with those changes. So when we're adopting these changes and they come back to council, it's, it's in line with everybody's wishes so that that conversation can happen. We do understand if there's more information that needs to be had in the background, we're prepared with doing that and bringing that back. We just want to make sure that, that we understand that this is consensus that the, the council wants to move forward with. So for your indulgence, when we make like big changes like this, words are usually not a huge item unless somebody brings up, but when we're looking at changing something of this magnitude throughout the document has compounding effects downstream, and that needs to be considered by hopefully all to, to speak up and, and say that if they agree with it or don't.
What are you looking for, a head nod?
Through the chair, that, that works. Whatever, whatever we look at in the back, I'm going to work with our manager to say that, you know, does, does everybody feel that this change is warranted? And then we can move forward and make that change.
Okay, so in this instance, I should ask if there's anyone that would be in disagreement?
To the addition of in the county in that particular clause? No. No, we're going to sneak something by air.
Okay.
Okay, so if we run into some issues like this, I will go and do that all over again.
Yeah.
I get the drift.
Okay. All right.
So I'm going to...
Go ahead.
Counselor Tanner.
Nothing to do with that. I'm going to go back to the land suitability stuff.
Okay.
And I need to be convinced that going with the land suitability ranking over the CLI, I know it says consideration will be given to the CLI. What benefit is that to Neill County for changing that? Because we have a lot of very productive land down in the southeast corner that does very well in drought conditions compared to other areas in the county. So I need to be convinced why we would want to go that way.
Okay. So I realize that it has been very confusing because with the CLI, we do have a lot of number one land, which the land suitability doesn't, because the land suitability ranking is looked at in the entire context of Canada. And so they're, they're equating that land in relation to something probably you're going to find more number one in the east versus where we are right here. So if we do consider the land suitability, which is what we're seeing, a lot of other government departments are relying on now, because it considers more things than the CLI did. The CLI was done in the 60s, so it's quite outdated. And there are, there's, there's challenges with either one, because they're going to be very large polygons that may or may not completely reflect the lands that those polygons sit on. And so anytime we have development, it's going to be making sure that it's considered one way or the other. And we report both of them to you in, in the Planning Commission whenever we're bringing something to you. But I, I think the reason we would step into using the land suitability is because it considers more things. It is updated probably more often than the CLI will be, and it's something that is a data set that's utilized by other departments. Alberta Environment will use that when we're getting some of the agrologists now that are reporting on different things, they're going off that land suitability. So it just provides a little bit of consistency. We can still report both if that's what you choose, and we have left the, as number 20. We are still going to utilize the CLI, and we can, we're happy to report both to the Planning Commission, but they are not equal, and so it does create some confusion. So when we're, when we're looking at developments that are not agricultural in nature, we need to decide what data set we're going to use to weigh them against. And so again, we've, we've gravitated more to that land suitability just because we are seeing that more often now in a larger arena. And so I, I want to try to pick something that's less confusing, and I know it is confusing with residents because we've used that CLI for so long. But when we are involved in, for example, the AUC is a good one. That's what they use in the AUC. So again, we want to make sure that we're very clear when we're, we're talking apples to apples, when we're dealing with some of those other departments and for our residents as well, so that they're not confused because everybody in that AUC arena is, is using land suitability, but we're still using CLI. And they, they are not the same data set. So again, it's, it is a bit of a philosophy change to go to that, but if we do, we need to carry that over into land use. And then we need to adjust the numbers that we look at protecting. So right now, when we've looked at land use bylaw, we've protected one to three under the CLI. It would, we would need to adjust that to reflect those lands in land suitability. So again, it's, it's up to you as council. It was something that was talked about quite a bit, I think, in the AEG Working Group. And I think consistency was probably the biggest reason that they chose to go towards that data set.
Am I correct in my assumption that CLI actually is the standard used for assessment? Because there's a value given to the land?
So that's how lands have been tracked, and Alberta Agriculture tracks every sale of lands that are done in the rural area, and they do that by CLI. And they give you what that market value per acre is based on existing sales. And they've done that for the last 20 years. And we pull that, that's what we use when we are working in municipal reserves, when we're taking that off of a subdivision. That's the numbers we will use because that's how they track it for that assessment and market value. So again, there's pros to both and there's cons to both. So it's really up to you as a council which way, which direction you want to go. And we can report both, but we want to make sure when we do that, we're not confusing people because the numbers are not going to be the same. You're never going to have a number one in the land suitability. So we just want to make sure that people aren't confused by how we're doing that, so...
I think for a transition period, it would probably be a good idea to use both. That's my thought. I mean, that's what happened when we, all of a sudden became metric in Canada. We used both sites, both sets until people got accustomed to it, so. Reeve King.
That's unusual. So one of the things that is problematic here is it's offensive to people who've had class one land to no longer have class one land. And so part of the confusion that's happening out there is a, is a understanding of all of a sudden, something I had previously, I no longer have. And so if I have been considering myself to have been farming class one land, and now you tell me there's no such thing as class one land, for some people, that's really difficult to, A, process, and two, accept. And so I, I think we have to go one way or the other. Personally, I don't think to, to use one system or use both systems, it's never going to clear up the confusion that exists around the difference between the land suitability ratings and the Canada Land Inventory system. So for me, I think, as I look at it, if the way of the world is moving towards land suitability, and we want to go in that direction, then that's likely the direction we should go in. But that's, that's for me, right? I recognize the fact that for a long, long time, the Canada Land Inventory's been there. It's an, it's an old system. It's actually not a bad system, but it does, and it's familiar. And so it really depends on whether we want to force a change and get people used to the different system, because they're going to run into it over and over and over and over again. Or whether we are content to stay with what we currently are using. And as you've said here, when we're calculating municipal values and school reserve values, we have to go back to the Canada Land Inventory. So somewhat, we are going to be using both systems. But for most people, the problem with the land suitability rating system is the fact that you've taken away what I thought I had based on an older system. And that's where the problem comes. And so I've, I've had, you know, people are quite offended to have lost their class one land. And for the province to say through AUC that... And for the province to say through AUC that there is no class one land in Alberta, that hasn't sat well with many people.
Correct, and I, I do understand that. Um, it is challenging. It has nothing to do with the produ, the productivity of the land. It is diff, it is considering different criterion. And that's what makes the evaluation look a little bit different. Um, it is very difficult to get that messaging across, no matter how we, no matter how we do that. But I, I really want to, I guess, be as upfront with ratepayers as we can, because I don't want them coming across that in a different arena and they have no idea what that is. So it's, either way, I think we need to educate on what that system is and that criterion, whether we decide to use it or not, um, is still up to you as council. But I still think we're gonna have to educate on the fact that that system uses different criterion, and it has nothing to do with how productive your lands are. That doesn't change. So I guess we need to know from council perspective.
Counsel McGee.
You guys just did all the prelude to what I wanted to say, so thank you. You saved me many words. So, and, and to bring all emphasis to that, that's where I'm really struggling. So we look at my division specifically, if we were. We have some really dramatic changes from just even one mile to the next mile in that area that is much more clearer of what the land can do. And when this section specifically is about ag, and we then as a county say we want to be ag friendly, I don't find that the LSR reflects the ag value appropriately in a way that, um, and, and I like the idea of having things work well with other agencies, but at the same time, this is our document about what we value, and we value what ag brings to the table. And so for me, the CLI better reflects that component. And tha, that's my big concern is because, um, yeah, the land that they have identified here that is high green, no significant limitations in part of our areas is now classified as a three. And to me, that's not a true flexion of ag in our county.
Okay.
Reeve King.
So having been in the ag business, not as directly involved as some of the other members on council, but certainly in terms of determining land value and usage over many, many years, there's a lot of land in this county that's rated at a relatively low, uh, rating that is much more productive than some of our land that's rated in the class one. And it has to do with moisture, reliability of moisture, um, environment and a whole bunch of other things. And that's where the LSR system gives you a much better reflection of topography and, and climate and all of those things which the CLI does not necessarily give you. However, having said that, I'm comfortable going whichever direction that council feels we need to go. And if staying with the status, which is the CLI, which, um, creates a greater comfort level with our ratepayers, then that's where we should stay. The reality is, is the number that's on that title, whatever that number means, whether it's a two, a three, a one, a five, whatever that happens to be, does not necessarily truly reflect productivity of that land, because there's so many other factors that are involved, not the least of which is management. So whichever way council wants to go on this, I'm great with it. We just need to recognize that the two systems are very, very different, and what they're looking at is quite different. And regardless of the direction we go, we know that we, if we stay with CLI, we know that we're gonna run into LSRS down the road. And it's gonna be used by other, and so we could stay with CLI for now, and if we determine in three years or five years that we're better off to go a different system, let's do that.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you to the Chair. The way this is intended and we're separating this is understanding the federal system on how quickly it runs, uh, excuse, um, language error, but they're, they're not a quick system. The, the LSR really adapts to multiple parameters of quantifying land. The CLI, uh, and, or thinking how she proposed it within the municipal development plan, really took in consideration how the federal government still uses this, uh, as indicators for, uh, schooling and things like that to really pertain it to its proper usage. But there will be a shift, and that shift is shown that the LSR is gonna be used. And that tool can actually be maximized by council through the land use by law with the individual categories in there to really determine as we look at future growth or opportunities within accounting and provide a little bit more, I guess, substance or areas.
More definers, if you would say, if, if council chooses to go that way when they're looking at, uh, bringing in different industries or different, uh, products into, uh, the county. So as it shifts, I do agree is that I do understand there is some angst in the background as, as there's change and two different competing systems, um, they give two different opportunities. Uh, and I feel the one is kind of, uh, no, no different if you wanna look at, um, the transition of a Betamax to a DVD, that, that transition happens. And un, unfortunately, we're, we're seeing that transition today. And it's a big decision as we look at a, uh, potential five-year document ahead of us and how we use that with other agencies.
Counsel McGee.
I'm struggling with what you're saying, um, in that you're asking us to conform the way we present information to our residents and how we make decisions as a council according to what federal agencies say they need. And I think that's what we pay you for, is to do that interpretation, to cross that over. And I believe our documents are here for our residents. And so, um, I, I really see the value in what you're saying, yet I still am not comfortable with changing which map we use, because I do not think it truly reflects our community. And our municipal development plan needs to reflect what is valued in our community. And they can cope with that, and we can have the expertise to interpret it to the agencies that need us to interpret it differently. But I do believe that when it comes to how we assess how we use our land, it should be the way, under the, the parameters of what matters to us, not dictated by another higher governing body because of something that doesn't relate to us. That's just my opinion.
Can I jump in again?
Oh, sure, you go ahead.
How about I make one last comment? Ha ha. Okay, so regardless of what we do here, we're gonna have to refer in our land use by law to both systems. Because in the land use by law, we're gonna have to use the rating system that's used by the, um, non-county influencers who affect land use here. So would it be reasonable, um, to consider, in this document, we say, consideration will be given to the land suitability ranking system when processing applications for non-agricultural uses. The Canada Land Inventory System will be used for all other use determinations, such as agricultural, calculating municipal and/or school reserves. So that keeps the CLI map in place for all agricultural applications and acknowledges the fact that we're gonna have to use the land suitability rating system for non-agricultural purposes.
I think that's fantastic.
Can I just jump in real quick?
Absolutely, jump in.
So, um, when we state in there lands with higher numerical class, um, or more marginal lands will be preferred, we gotta make sure that in our land use, that we say that it must be higher than a three. Like, we gotta make, we make it very clear. If we're using the, the LSR, that in our land use, it says four and higher. Like, you know, right now, everybody see, hears one and two, even though it's a changing environment. It's still that one and two in the back of their minds. We've gotta make it very clear out there that we're saying two and three. Not one and two, but two and three. And it's part of the whole education here, but they just look at this and then, wow, we're now classed, you know, we're a three here in the LSR, and anything could happen there. So I guess, I guess we gotta make sure we get our land use updated.
Correct.
Very quickly after this.
We're well aware.
That's coming in 2025?
Yes.
So I guess that, that's my way of how we split this, you know? This is Solomon splitting the baby and whatever. It's a determination for how we, which system we use for which type of application. So if we use the land suitability in those ones where we know we're going to encounter those, um, nonNiill County influencers, and then we use the CLI rating system for all agricultural determinations and the school and other. So that way, we maintain the existing system for all agricultural determinations within Niill County, and we acknowledge the fact that we're gonna have to use the land suitability ratings for those other outside influencers. Just a thought. And I said that would be my last comment on this topic.
No, and thanks for this. I threw it out there quite a few minutes ago, this discussion, so, um, I really appreciate everybody's thoughts here and so that it's a little easy for us and those listening to, um, to work at, what does this really mean? What are the, what is the difference between the two here? So it's been a great discussion, so thank you. And for the time being, I can see both being part of this presentation, and, because I think we've made it very clear which areas we will be using both, both maps.
Okay. And everyone is good with that?
Everyone okay with it?
Okay. We will make that.
Oh, okay.
Just before we do that. And make sure they're in the definitions.
Okay.
Right? Land suitability and how that's gonna be applied, it's, it's not in the definitions right now. And then the Canada Land Inventory System, I don't believe it's in here either. Oh, yes, it is, it is, but not the land suitability rating. So just make sure that within our definitions, within the land use by law, we specifically define what they are and where we're using. And I think that'll help clarify.
Okay.
Okay, are we, are we good with that? Because I've been, I've been asked that maybe we should have a 10-minute break.
Oh, okay.
Reese Seth. Right? That's what you're, yeah, okay. Go. Okay, well, I guess we're going to start a couple minutes early, which is good, because it's going to take a while. Okay, are, are, are we done with the discussion on LSRS and CLI? Okay, one down, and what have we got? A dozen to go?
A lot.
Okay, anytime you're ready, Ms. Hazelton.
The next item in the agricultural one is really regarding confined feeding operations and where we draw the line for the exclusion zone. So the working group had, for both new and existing, they don't have to be the same, but they can be if you choose. They had decided to create the buffer of one mile from an urban. What you will see on map three in the back of your book is what that looks like. And when we met at council, you guys wanted some additional information, which I provided to you. So we've gone through, and to the best of our knowledge, this may not be 100% perfect. It's very difficult with some of the older operations that are still in existence as far as we know. And so what we had, our GIS draft up, what you will see on that map in red are the ones that fall within that mile of an urban. What you see with the ones in yellow are the ones that will fall within that mile from the intermunicipal development plan. So you wanted to know kind of who's affected and how, so we kind of pulled that together. We basically have three urbans that do have some confined feeding around them, and that would be Troschu, Linden, and Acme. Linden by far has the most, and we've also given you a little bit of a spreadsheet with what they have and what we know is permitted. For some of them, many of them actually have permits that they're holding from the municipality from years ago. They don't have an NRCB permit, but they are grandfathered to operate under their municipal permit with any activity that they were doing. And so this is to the best of our knowledge with what they have for livestock numbers and that they're still operating. So questions regarding that?
Counselor Phillips?
Okay, so under number 12, under the little subtitle of the number three there, we're at the bottom, you've removed an intermunicipal development plan boundary. And yet on your hierarchy of plans process says that the intermunicipal development plans go over our municipal development plan.
Correct.
So why are we removing that then?
So with, specific to livestock, the NRCB is the approving authority, and they are bound in the legislation to utilize whatever we put in our municipal development plan. The legislation has not caught up with the IDP idea. There's value in having that intermunicipal development plan without question, but right now, the way the legislation is worded is if an application comes in the door that is inconsistent with our municipal development plan, the approval officer has to deny it. They can appeal that, and it would go to a quasi-judicial board. The board can choose to hear it or not. The board is not bound by our municipal development plan. They have to consider it, but they are not bound by it. So they can override that municipal development plan, so that's a little bit of how that process works. So with municipalities, everybody has to put in what they, whatever the exclusion zones they want in their municipal development plan in order for those to be utilized by the NRCB. Because the NRCB, that's, that's the document that they're tasked with looking at, is the municipal development plan. So in the, that's how it is in the Agricultural Operations Practices Act and then the regulations. So that, that's why, in this case, how we draw that line matters in the municipal development plan.
Counselor Phillips?
Okay, just for public consumption, because I did not sit around here when we did the IDPs. After those were completed, did you hold a public consultation on what might affect these people that would be around these urbans?
So we, we do have to do public hearings for the IDPs, and so they were put into place. The municipal development plan was not being looked at concurrently. So that part wasn't really addressed in that intermunicipal development plan. We were going through that document, and that's what the public hearing was about. At the end of the day, it's where US Council C is the most appropriate place to draw that line to measure that exclusion distance. Is it the mile from the village boundary? Is it the mile from the intermunicipal development plan boundary? Is it somewhere else? You can certainly draw that line differently. You're not, this is where, this is where it matters, is how we draw it here. You can draw that line differently for new versus existing, if you choose to do that. And you, you are not bound by either of these if you choose to draw the line somewhere else. So, but we do have to have consensus when we draw that line.
Counselor Phillips?
So when you held your open house on this, did the people that would be directly affected by this IDP being put into effect come and speak in behalf of, maybe I have an issue with that?
No.
So they didn't, so the process existed?
No, but I, I don't think they realized there was an issue. So regardless of how it happened, where is the appropriate place to draw the line?
And I understand that, but the thing I'm trying to get across is, is we're supposed to be bound to process, which means everybody who's in this county is bound to that same process. Which means if you held an open house and they didn't come and talk at it that they had an issue, how is that my concern? The IDP, in my opinion, still exists.
It does exist, yes. We're not touching the IDP.
But you're check, you're touching the lines within it?
We're not touching the line. We're just deciding where we're measuring from.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Yes, so again, nothing is being touched in the intermunicipal development plans. That is a public hearing and working with whatever municipality we have that plan with. That is not done in isolation by Nehill County. We don't have the authority to change a plan without that other party at the table.
You meant the IDPs.
For the IDPs, yes. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
For the IDPs, yes. We don't have the authority to change that without them at the table, and they hold their own public hearing as well regarding that plan. So, but the municipal development plan is where we have to determine how we draw that line and where that measurement is taken from.
Okay, so then I'll come back to my question again. Why did you remove that at the bottom of number three under 12?
That was-
I just need your reasoning.
That was a choice of the working group.
So when you can, when you got these numbers here at 43.93, did that include when we went to Acme and Troschu with those numbers as well?
Yeah, so that's all in there.
Okay, so when I was in Acme, I sat at a table with people that I have some issues with that number being presented from what was happening at the table with me. I had some people sitting at the table that did not speak English and were being cued on what number to pick. I happened to just be sitting there and witness this. So I do have a little bit of an issue with those numbers and the working group wanting that, when they might not know all of what I seen while we went to those working groups in Acme and then Troschu.
Reeve King?
So when you look at the numbers from the Troschu and the Acme, the results in the two communities really weren't all that different.
Correct.
And so when you combine the numbers from Troschu and combine the numbers from Acme, there wasn't a significant shift in the result as a result of adding the Acme numbers in.
Uh, no, I don't think so. I don't have that number in front of me. I can pull it if we need it, but-
I'm going off my own recollection of the numbers from the two communities.
They were fairly consistent across the board, for sure.
And when we look at, at the numbers you're presenting here today, there is the weighting on the feedback and the decision by the group aren't necessarily completely consistent. So the working group recommendation is this, if you take the 29, 9, and 15, and 44.93, you would say that it's almost a half and half split in terms of one mile from an urban, or use the AOPA rule, which is basically the same, or use the IDP boundary. There's not a lot of differences. Almost like half of them said this and half of them said that. So the, the decision for us is really around, as council, what do we think? And then if we put in place the 1.6 kilometers or one mile from an urban boundary, then that goes to a public hearing at which point in time we get to hear from everybody who is involved and would be able to determine whether we want to stay with that at that point in time or change from that.
Correct.
If we left it at the IDP boundary and one mile from the IDP boundary, at the public hearing, we are going to hear from people who are going to say, we want you to change that. If we make it to the one mile from the municipal boundary at the public hearing, we're going to hear from people who are going to say, we want you to change that. So regardless of what we do here as council, whatever decision we make, we are going to get feedback from the public to say, either do something different or whatever, no matter what we do. So based on the meetings we had in Acme and Troschu, from the numbers that are presented in front of me right now, it looks like we're about a half and half split. The working group looked at those numbers and determined that they wanted to go to the 1.6 from an urban boundary. That's what you're saying this morning?
Yep, correct.
Okay, thank you. And that does not change an IDP boundary in any way, shape-
No, it does not. The IDP boundary stays where it is. Correct. Yep.
Counselor Cunningham?
So just to provide clarity, because I know we probably have lots of people that are watching on this topic. So it says right now agriculture sector policy change. So what does the current policy say?
Current policy is one mile from an intermunicipal development plan boundary. No new or existing. Can, no expansion of existing. So if they're there, they can stay there, they can still operate, but they cannot expand, and no new ones could apply to be in those lands, which is currently measured from the intermunicipal development plan boundary. So that's how it is currently written.
Well, yes and no. Right?
In, in the one that's adopted.
It says municipal boundary or IDP.
Yes.
That's the language that's in there. So it doesn't specifically refer to just specifically the intermunicipal development-
No.
-plan boundary. It talks about a municipal boundary or an IDP. And that was, when did we do that one?
2005 is when that wording went in, but as soon as we drew the line, it became from that line.
Yes. And so what I'm saying is that although it said that in 2005, at that point in time, none of those things existed or were even contemplated except with the town of Three Hills.
And that one wasn't until 2010, I don't believe, so-
So when we did the IDP boundaries, one of the things that was not thought about at all was what did the municipal development plans say? And so the impacts of the change that we made when we developed IDPs with all our urban neighbors was not even contemplated as being something that we were going to see, because we hadn't thought about the wording that was in the municipal development plan, which referred to those boundaries. So as we've said before, in some ways, some of the change that happened as a result of a new boundary that was created was unintended consequence, or at least unforeseen consequence. And so that's why we're sitting here today with the conversation we're having.
Correct. Is there an appetite to pull them apart and consider new differently than we do existing? And if so, what would that look like?
Counselor Tanner?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Counselor Phillips?
The operation near Acme that would be affected, will they be applying for, if this was to go through, would they be applying for an expansion on their existing lot?
That is my understanding.
But I guess I could put the same question out there. Any of their confined around Troschu or Linden, same thing?
The way I see this, after you presenting the numbers, there are a number of agricultural operations that are, that are affected by unintended consequences. Agriculture is one of the important pieces in Nehill County, always has been, and I'm assuming it always will be. Although the operations are getting larger, they are, it is still agriculture. And we're affecting a number of operations here if we leave the wording, or if we leave the measurement from an IDP rather than corporate limits. I can see the value in saying no new operations within an IDP. But AOPA rules, you know, even though the IDP is part of the reason that the measuring point changed, it was an unintended consequence. We were never looking to change that boundary, and I think had we, well, had I been in, had I had it in my head, then I know the IDPs would have looked different. Because I think as far as council, we are, or as far as Nehill County Council goes, I think we are responsible to our rate payers, to our landowners, and I think it's important that they have the ability to continue their operations. And I know we have an agricultural first kind of a scenario there anyway, but that being said, there are, there are, there's a number of issues that came up because of that IDP. And had, had we known, had I known, there, those issues would have not been a problem at this point in time, but we didn't know that. We'll go with Counselor McGee, and then I'll go to you, Counselor Christie.
So for clarity about where I'm coming from, I agree that the importance of Nehill County's livestock industry is, is high. And I don't want that to be questioned by what I'm going to say. But I also recognize that the purpose of this agreement was to work with all affected stakeholders, not just the people who are in that industry. And I do believe that this conversation is very, very valuable, because we have an ethical obligation to consider all those other perspectives when we look at this. No, no, did we intend to limit what they could do? Absolutely not. Does that mean that progress means maybe it was a good outcome to a degree? It might be. And so to say a blanket yes to expansion over many years is where I'm uncomfortable. I think if, I think we stick with- yes to expansion over many years is where I'm uncomfortable. I think if, I think we stick with the boundaries we had, but we allow established and, and permitted groups to have the opportunity to expand, make an exception to the rule, I guess, for these people with a timeline in, in mind. So whether it's three years like AOC has for other type things for expansion. To me, to me, it's not future oriented if we totally go back to the old way. I think we need to look at the future and look at the fact that, for one, we have a housing shortage. We know our municipality, our neighboring municipalities will have to take care of that. Does that mean that their needs for what that boundary looks like is changed? Is it that the people who are on our working groups, highly egg incorporated type people, did we have hamlet people there who are looking at how this would affect things that have a different perspective? So I think the perspectives could be challenged a bit, and I, I don't think it's as black and white as to where the boundary should be. I also think is expansion even allowed? And if it is, for how long? Would we even consider that? Because it being an, an open-ended length of time, I'm absolutely against.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Christie.
I guess my, my concern, I, I agree there should be no new confined feeding operations within a mile of the IDP. To grandfather an existing facility, when you think about agriculture, it's an evolving and dynamic industry. As long as that footprint doesn't change, but their production, you can't cap their production, and that's what we're doing. If, if the footprint doesn't change, but it evolves in better process or better technology, I don't know how we can stop that. And if we do, we're capping their potential. And that's not fair.
Reeve King.
So can we flip the argument? So let's say that we were to say to the town of XYZ in Alberta, who's currently a mile and a half from a confined feeding operation, that they can't expand in the direction of that confined feeding operation. Would they be willing to accept that limitation on their own development? The answer in my mind is probably not. So why would I say to an agriculture producer, and taking into consideration Counselor Christie's comments, within an established footprint, why would I say to him that you can't use new technology, you can't use advances in egg science, and we limit your production to what it is today? Because within the boundaries of some of those communities, there are no longer operational livestock facilities that could be put back in operation because they're grandfathered, and they can have nothing to say about that if NRCB was to approve those. So if I'm aware that there's a place that used to have a hog barn or a chicken barn or a feedlot or whatever it happened to be, and that licensing is still in place from NRCB, even though it hasn't been there for the last ten or fifteen years, if they went back to the NRCB, they could get permission to go back there. Nobody could stop it at that point in time. And they would be allowed to operate within this boundary in spite of what our rules say. But I'm flipping it around to say, okay, town of Troschu, Mike Lemay has a feedlot, which currently he may or may want to expand. But if we limit his expansion because of your presence there, can we limit the town of Troschu's expansion because of his presence there? The answer is no. I don't think that's fair. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is we have to look at it from the other side of the thing, right? So let's say, and I'm going to go back to town XYZ, their current boundary is this, they, what's it, annex land from county that's beside them, they grow out into that, and now their municipal boundary is a half a mile further than where it used to be. That changes the rules for a whole bunch of people who are around them. So who has the advantage? So if I say to an egg producer who's currently situated close that you can't expand because of that municipality, why isn't there rules that affect that municipality in terms of their expansion? There isn't. So I don't know. It's a convoluted argument. And I agree with Counselor Christie. It's, it's hard to say to an egg producer who is our resident and our taxpayer, that you can't do something because of an arbitrary line that we drew. I have a problem with that.
Counselor Forbes.
I also have a problem with that same person not showing up at a public hearing where they could voice their opinion.
Counselor Cunningham.
Okay, because this gets very confusing. I, I can't even imagine what the, how, I mean, it's confusing enough for me, I can't imagine with the public. So, okay. So just so I have it very clear, if this MD policy changes, do the current IDPs align with that, or is there a differentiation between them?
It would be the same across the board, because depending on where you measure from. So if, if it stays the way it is, it would be a mile from any urban. So anyone on that map that you see in red will be impacted, and they cannot expand because they fall within the mile of the urban. If you change it to go back to the measurement being taken from the intermunicipal development plan, then everyone that's orange is impacted and can no longer expand. They, they can still operate with what they're doing today, but they can't expand. And it would be the same for every single one, because the wording is in our municipal development plan. So the intermunicipal development plan lines are not equal. They're different around different municipalities, because they were, they were drawn with that administration and council. So they're not all equal that way. In some cases, the lands go a little bit farther out than other cases. So in that regard, depending on where you measure, could impact more on one side of that municipality. But if you, if you chose how it is existing, the mile is from their boundary, no matter what. And that includes our hamlets. So it'd be a mile from our hamlets. So if I might, Mr. Counselor Christie had mentioned, and I think I've heard it from a couple of you, that you are fine with treating new differently. If we can at least get consensus on the new, I think the existing is the one that is creating the challenge, for sure. But if we can get some consensus on the new and how we would want to measure for the new operations, then we can move on to just discussing the existing. I also want to clarify that when we're talking about, if we do go back to using the intermunicipal development plan boundary line, we're talking about those plans adjacent to urbans. We would not be talking about the intermunicipal development plan we have with Red Deer, Rocky View, or Wheatland, because that's all egg land along the border. There are no urbans. So those would be left out. It would be the urban intermunicipal development plan. So we would clarify that in our municipal development plan.
So what's council's thoughts? Do we want to keep the one mile boundary from the IDP for new operations? Are we going to go in that direction for new operations that are looking to apply and to develop within? Well, obviously not develop within, but they'd have to develop outside of that boundary.
Reeve King.
Yeah, I'll weigh in. I'd, I'd say because they haven't developed and then had a rule change, so they're not existing right now, we're still going to impact some egg producers, but they don't have an existing facility that they developed under an old set of, a different set of rules. So if we did that, created the one mile from an IDP boundary, we shouldn't be impacting, other than someone who all his land is within that IDP, we shouldn't be impacting someone who built a facility with the intention of expanding and now can't because of that IDP boundary, the different change that we made when we put the IDPs in place. So. Sure.
I guess I'll just, sorry, I'll jump in through, through the chat.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess we'll find out in an open house if there is something in the works by somebody, but at this point in time, I could live with that, no problem. This is for new. This is for new, and going forward, they come in and they say, well, this is what's in here, whereas existing is different. So we could work on number twelve, no problem. I have no problems with that, with new operations.
Any, anyone else want to weigh in?
Since we need consensus, I, I just want to throw in that, yeah, I agree with that for, for new.
Counselor Cunningham.
So for me, I'm, I'm not prepared to make a decision on that. I think there's been a little bit of conversation around maybe some consultations with urbans, and, and I would really like to have that happen so I can maybe understand a little bit better the impact that perhaps they would be feeling on a change like this. So, yeah, that's just my thoughts on that.
I'll throw it out there again, sorry.
Counselor Carter, sorry.
So Counselor Cunningham, are you thinking that they're not going to like that, or what, what were you thinking then?
I'm never going to make an assumption on what anybody else is thinking, so I would just like to have that conversation with those urbans and have that discussion first before I make that decision.
Reeve King.
Again, in the interest of fairness here, if we were going to actually have a conversation with an urban regarding how they might feel about this change, why would we not then open the door to a producer who's a ratepayer of ours who wants to have a conversation? There is a public hearing process that we have that allows all those affected parties to have input in a hearing that is for everyone to hear and see the arguments on both sides. So if I'm going to give a special opportunity to an urban, am I prepared to give a special opportunity to an affected producer? Because here's the problem. The person who's affected in one way or the other cannot be allowed to respond to the comment made by the opposing side, which the whole purpose of a public hearing is. That, I'm running into a bit of a problem there. And I recognize that there is a process through which we created these IDPs, and there's a process by which we will review these IDPs. And we're all going to feel differently about this, but I, I just have a problem with special treatment.
Counselor Forbes.
Well, then if I go off of Counselor Christie's, are we, if we're doing this for the new confined as well, are we limiting them as well? If we're going to take existing and we're not going to limit them, why are we limiting new? Just a question.
Well, I guess my, my thoughts on that would be is you're not going to be able to move an existing, but you should be able to shift a new to encompass the new rules. But I mean, that's the only thing I can think of, is why there would be an inconsistency there.
Counselor Forbes.
So this came about because the NRBC, is that right?
NRCB.
Thank you. They made a determination off of our documents that affected our people. So they actually, for once, as a quasi-digital board, actually did what they said they were going to do.
It's the province. So it's in the, yeah, it's in the Agricultural Operations Practices Act when it was written. Originally, I, the municipalities didn't have a lot of tools, but they did say you can use your municipal development plan as a tool to create exclusion zones. Those exclusion zones need to be reasonable. You can't exclude them from your entire province, or your entire municipality, which was what some municipalities were doing, which is why the province took over that approval process. And so typically, and it is the municipal development plan that is the recognized document where you can use that as your tool to create your exclusion zones. As I said, if it's in your municipal development plan as an exclusion zone, the approval officer has to deny it. They don't even, can't even really consider it or create conditions or anything. It's an instant denial which can be appealed. So, and, and we have had that on one, and the appeal, they chose not to hear it at that point in time because it was something that had gone through the appropriate process. So it, it is the tool we have. Whether we choose to exercise that tool or not is completely up to council. But it is the tool that we were granted from the provincial government through the Agricultural Operations Practices Act and regulations.
Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
I'm just going to bring some real clarity of vocabulary here for me, just to be sure I am wrapping my head around this correctly. So the question about new is whether or not, so if we look at the map you gave us that shows the different boundaries, we're saying no new ones within this red line, correct? Even though there's some currently, there'll be no additional ones.
Yeah, so this is.
That's what you're asking right now, correct?
Okay. So the ones that we gave you today, those red ones are already impacted no matter what. They're within the mile.
Right.
So they are operating as they are today, and there will be no opportunity for expansion to anything that's red. If we stay with a mile from the urban, the yellow ones could still expand, or the orange, whatever color you want to call that. They would still have the opportunity to expand. However, if we move that line to the intermunicipal development plan boundary and we measure from there, then those operations would not have the ability to expand. And we've done a close-up too behind, which maybe helps a little bit. So you can see exactly those proximities. And again, just so you guys are aware, this isn't one hundred percent perfect, because we're not entirely sure on all of them if they're still active. We're pretty sure the ones that we've given you are still operating, but we don't have a hundred percent clarification on that. So.
So when it comes to Counselor Cunningham's request about talking to municipalities and considering it, my question is, for just this component of the dis- my question is, for just this component of the discussion, we are actually giving municipalities an opportunity to have more restriction than they had prior if we say no new. Because prior to these boundaries being written, new ones could have gone within that line.
Under the adopted municipal development plan, no. Right now, the measurement is from the intermunicipal development plan boundary. There is no new and no expansion of existing. So that's how it currently is today until we adopt the next version of the municipal development plan.
So before we do...
Prior to the IDPs, I think.
That's what I'm going to say. So prior to the IDPs...
Is when that wording went in.
When they could have gone there, and so what we're just saying is we'll keep it as the IDP has determined it to be for new, is what we're asking.
Yes. So it would stay the same as what's in the existing adopted version.
Right. And so really, we're not making any consequences to any hamlets if we stick with what we already agreed on. So there isn't a discussion to have to have, or towns, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we have a majority on the new and for us to change the wording there? When it comes back to council?
Well, I'm shaking my head.
So we're talking, so we're talking the IDP boundary plus a mile? Are we talking within the IDP itself?
We're talking the IDP boundary plus a mile.
So...
For new.
So what we're really doing is we're sterilizing fairly large area around any urban municipality from any potential development by somebody wanting to have a confined feeding operation.
Yes. It's livestock only. So this, because...
Yeah, but livestock...
Yes.
Is livestock is livestock. So what we've done, when we had a mile beyond a municipal boundary, we sterilized a certain area. When we went to an IDP, we've enlarged that, and now we're going to add an extra mile beyond that. Got to think about that. That's, so it's not, we're not just talking about within the IDP boundary. We're talking the IDP boundary plus an extra mile.
And that is the current wording, is a mile from an intermunicipal development plan.
So what we're doing is we're creating a fairly large exclusion zone for new operations around an urban. Much, much, much bigger than what we've ever had previous. So it's not just the IDP boundary now, it's the IDP boundary plus an additional mile.
And you can, you can change that, however you see fit. I just want to make sure that we capture the wording that you want to see when we bring it back.
Yeah, I forgot about that extra mile.
And that is, yeah, the map that we provided to you historically, we've given you so many, I know, did show the mile from the intermunicipal development plan boundary, and we had one that showed the mile from the municipal boundary. So we had given you a couple different ones.
So if we make, make the ruling that there is no intensive livestock operation, or I guess that would be the only thing that would be unable to go inside the IDP.
Correct. You could still have the potential to have an application for commercial or some industrial development, and just, whenever you cite livestock close to more of an urban, that is where you're going to have the nuisance complaints. We don't deal with them. They do go through NRCB. But that's part of the reason why you have a minimum distance separation that happens when they cite these.
So if we use the IDP boundary as the boundary, or use the IDP as no intensive livestock operations within the IDP, okay, we're sterilizing that area, but we can have adjacent to it if it is more than one mile from a corporate boundary of the town, village, whatever.
So you have, you know, what we see now with the conversation is one mile from the urban, the IDP plan area itself, or a mile from the IDP boundary.
From the IDP.
So those are kind of the options that we're talking about. And they don't have to remain those options. They could be different, but, and this is new only, so...
Okay, well then I'll change my vote. I would say no. No NRCB facilities within an IDP.
Or one mile from an urban.
Or, yeah, and qualifying that with one mile outside of a corporate boundary of a town or village. So we're sterilizing in, yeah, we're sterilizing quite a bit with the IDP boundaries, but you'd sterilize quite a bit more if you're one mile from that IDP boundary. So the only thing that would change is if the corporate limits were changed through an annexation process.
Or the IDP boundaries changed.
Or the, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
And I guess I'm not looking at this strictly from a single community point of view because if you look at the IDP boundaries around the communities that we're talking about, communities like Carbon and Linden, they have massive IDP areas. And so if we said nothing within that area, in a, in a, in a large case, we've already sterilized a big part of Neale County. If we add an additional mile to that, that's huge.
The ripple gets bigger.
The ripple is massive at that point in time. And so that, that's why I wanted to clarify that we're talking not only an IDP, but we're talking an IDP plus another mile. And that's, to me, that's excessive, so...
Thank you. I really appreciate the clarity, and that's why I asked the question for clarity because I felt as though we were both talking two different ideas, is what I was picking up on. And you did clarify because I did not make the plus mile in this conversation. So, thank you.
And just for reference, the maps that include the intermunicipal development plan boundaries are starting at map 11 in the back of your document. That will show you what that plan area looks like.
Would be the area of influence. Counselor McGee.
So, for clarity, I am only in agreement to say no new within the IDP boundary. I am not in agreement of adding a mile.
Same, same here. Reeve King.
And just to be clear, you're saying the IDP boundary or the one mile from a municipal
Yes.
fringe. So it's IDP and sort of thing, not...
Corporate boundary.
Because in some cases, the mile from the corporate boundary is greater than the IDP.
Well, maybe we can develop a consensus now about lunch. Do we want to go for lunch now and think about it and come back to finish this discussion? Or do we want to, yeah, okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, we're recessing for lunch. What are we looking, 45 minutes possibly? Okay, we'll try it for 45.
Or did you?
Okay.
Okay. All right, we are coming back into session.
Okay, so from prior to lunch, this is what I have down, and this is just strictly for new confined feeding operations. There would be no new within the inter municipal development plan boundary or one mile of an urban boundary, whichever is greater. That's what I have for new, and everyone's good with that? Okay?
Okay, Counselor Forbes.
No, I'm not okay with it, and only because we're creating something that might limit someone who's trying to do something new. So why do the people that get grandfathered in get that exception, but the new people doing one don't? So I'll never be in agreeance, because I think the problem is, is we have so many things that one person can do and another can't, and that's the complaints I get. So I'm trying not to have this happen as much anymore, because it should be a level playing field across the whole entire board, what we're doing.
Reeve King, so I get where you're coming from, and so the only way that you can then get around us putting a rule in place is defer to a provincial rule, which is AOPA. So it's actually not more strict necessarily, but it does have very specific parameters under which development can take place, and it's not our rule, it's their rule. And so if we said that, and trust me, if we say AOPA rules, that's going to even be more problematic for us in terms of some of the reaction we get. However, if we don't want to set a rule, then we have to go to somebody else's rules that are set, and in this case, it would be AOPA rules around confined feeding and livestock production, and how... So that's the other set of rules that we'd have to look at. And so I think that by going with what we've suggested, that we've at least limited the amount of limitation that we're placing on people.
So just want clarification from Counselor Forbes. So you're saying that it's okay for the existing to expand within it, and you'd just like the same for everybody? You want an even playing field for everybody? Or you're not in favor of existing being able to expand too? Or is it just you want them both on the same playing field?
I guess it's always in the back of my mind, because I live in a hamlet, true story, and this won't affect anyone that lives in a hamlet, but it may affect someone that lives in a country residential. So I'm always going to look at this and think, in the future, someone's going to be affected, whether that's a new confined feeding operation or a pre-existing one. I'm just not sure why we're changing the rules for pre-existing when they had the ability to go to a process and speak in public, and they didn't. That's the problem I'm struggling with.
Okay, so let me try to qualify this. So what you would like to see is one mile from corporate limits of towns or villages and hamlets.
The way the old one was, yes.
Okay. No, with the IDP or without the IDP?
The way it was existing before we made this change, whatever we were going by before, which was the IDP, that's what I would like to go by.
Yeah, Reeve King.
Okay, so we're stuck here. And actually, we are and we aren't, because if we put this to a vote, we decide one way or the other. We'd either say yes or no, but if we're stuck here, let's leave it, let's go past it.
Okay.
Like, we're going to be here till tomorrow, trying to resolve just this one thing. So what I'm going to suggest is perhaps what we need to do is just set this one aside for now and come back to it. Whether we come back to it today, or we come back to it in another cow meeting, or a council meeting, however that happens, all this is going to do is it just delays us getting to the point where this is finished. Is that a problem? I don't think so, as long as we have the conversation to make the process work for us, so that when we say, okay, we're done with this, and we're ready to have the public look at it, we have something that we're all relatively in agreement with. So if we're stuck here, and there's other things that we need to have some consensus on, why don't we move past this one? What's the word, table this for now, and come back to it in another conversation, whether that's today or another time.
Could I also request that we get the AOPA policy, because I've not seen that. So could I get a copy of, if we're not going to do it ourselves, and we have to follow legislation, can I get a copy of what that looks like so I can read it?
It's fat, fat. It is a piece of legislation with the... So there is a formula that they create a minimum distance separation based on livestock type and number. And so depending on what you have for livestock, dairy, beef, and hog are always going to be much greater minimum distance separation because of the level of nuisance they can create. And so depending on what your size is, but we can print you a copy of the legislation, but it's quite thick, just so you're aware.
Well, I would like the legislation, sorry. I would like the legislation that would be replacing what we have right here, that Reeve King has spoken to.
Okay.
That we would have to do it. I just want to see what we would be replacing this with if it was AOPA.
Okay.
That's easy enough to do.
Yep.
Counselor Christie.
My question, just to throw something, a monkey wrench in this, when does cow calf get to be confined feeding?
It's not at this point in time.
So it's just exempt?
Yep, they're exempt. They do have some requirements when it comes to how they feed, if it's adjacent to a water body. And so they have setback requirements, so they aren't impacting those water bodies, but they're completely exempt from legislation. So again, if what we're seeing in this boundary zone, or you could still have seasonal feeding and bedding sites or cow calf operations, it's the feeding and finishing that trigger that requirement. Okay?
All right, so from what I gather, what we've done is we've made a decision to leave this... Okay, so are we leaving the IDP, or are we leaving this whole subject?
What I'm... Sorry. My suggestion was we just set aside this conversation around what that distance looks like, and what those are going to be, what we're going to include them in, and then we just go on to the other things that we need to make a decision on. So rather than being stuck on whether it's the IDP, it's the municipal boundary, whether it's AOPA or whatever around livestock, we just leave that and answer the other questions that Ms. Hazelton has for us, and perhaps in that process, we might come back to it, or we might say, you know what? We're going to take a week or two to think about it.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. It was going to be the total conversation on setbacks. So now we're going to question three, am I correct in that?
Well, was there anything else in the agriculture one that we basically were trying to encourage? Stuff that we already do?
Okay, I'm going off of the RFP.
Yes.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, you go ahead.
If there's anything else in the egg one that we need to talk about.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Carrie has a question.
Counselor Forbes.
Under number 18, the county is generally supportive. I do not like the wording of generally, because our strategic plan speaks about egg all the time, so we're either in or we're not. So I would like to see that word removed. And then down in number 20, where you're talking about the CLI, why are we not also including renewables? Because we do, it is based, the U C does base their stuff off of what our land classification is as well, or what we have in our land use.
They use the land suitability ranking for the AUC.
Okay.
And we deal with that more specifically in the land use bylaw, is where we have the specific. When we put it in land use bylaw, we were using CLI, and we said one to three is prohibited. So when we, and we have a section on renewable energy in here, so this is just strictly dealing with egg. So these are egg policies. Regarding the word generally, and again, some of this, this has gone through legal review, and we did make their amendments. That was a word that they requested that we include, because if we say we're supportive, and it could be an argument for somebody if for some reason there is an issue with an agricultural operation that needs to be addressed, it can open the door to somebody coming in and saying, no, it says you're always supportive. So in order to say, or he felt it was wiser as a municipality to use generally supportive, and again, in this case, we're talking about grain largely, because livestock is dealt with through NRCB. If they are over those numbers, they are dealt with through NRCB. And it's really when you have uses that land in the middle of an egg district, and we have quite a few of those. We have lots of home occupations. We have, for example, a wedding barn. If there's combines going on, they get to go on, basically. We are supportive of agricultural activity occurring when it needs to occur, as long as it's keeping with normal practices. So that was something legal to land on, but again, it's up to you as council.
Counselor Forbes.
I can live with that one. So if I go to 22, where it says the county will be supportive of agricultural program through the ASB, I think it needs to state the county supports agricultural programs through Agricultural Service Board. Because you take, the council takes recommendations from that particular board.
Okay.
Unless you... Yep.
Reeve King.
Sorry, I'm going to take the opposite tact on this one. The Agricultural Service Board makes recommendations to council. We do not have to support those recommendations. And that's part of my whole argument around why we're changing the makeup of the egg service board, because currently, four members of council can make a decision at egg service board, which becomes council policy. So we are supportive of agricultural activities, and we are supportive of the programming through Agricultural Service Board, but I don't think it should say we will support whatever egg service board comes forward with as a recommendation, because there still needs to be a debate at council before that becomes council policy and gets implemented as an action item by administration. So get where I'm coming from? I guess I'm really, really cautious about saying that council will do this when it's a recommendation coming from another part of our own organization.
Mr. Gannon.
Sorry, thank you through the chair. I just want to add one additional thought on this is, as we've explored through the ASB, the mechanism or the makeup of the ASB versus producers or individuals on the actual board versus counselors is changing. That number is looking at being changed. Council does have a different view than what the general members on the egg service board may have, and you may have a different out view and perspective on this. So it does incorporate where those decisions, and the reason that mechanism is so council, can take all the factors of the municipality in those decisions and those recommendations. We try to bring them to the ASB for consideration, but at times, there's more discussion that's needed in the background to really solidify our key documents, our strat plan, our municipal development plan, and so on, on how the proposed changes could be, could affect them.
Counselor Forbes.
So I guess then that brings me to the question around the Reeve about the placement of how many people we have on ASB, because he can sit on those boards, so at any time, if we have three members and he sits, we now have four. So then this becomes, are those numbers really accurate to what we're doing?
Reeve King.
So the only response I'll provide to that is, in the last egg service board meeting, I actually probably acted in a way I shouldn't have, which is I made a motion to approve minutes. I don't plan to vote, and I didn't vote on any of the things that were decided. I had a voice in the conversation, but I did not vote to influence the outcome. So because of the way, and Mr. Hogan and I had a conversation that same day, as I said, you know, the Reeve is kind of ex officio or whatever, and can attend all those board meetings. And he said, well, I'm not sure that's any, that is, at this point in time, supported by the MGA. It might be supported by us as council, but it's not supported necessarily by the MGA. So we might have to look at that as well as a council to determine whether that's a policy we want to continue going forward with. I really feel that we have to be extremely careful, and that's why I brought up that whole conversation around egg service board and its makeup, is that we don't have a de facto council meeting, even though it's not a council meeting. So anytime we have a majority of council in any one place, we have to be very careful about what decisions we're making there, that they're not necessarily policy or decisions that are going to be forced at council level.
I guess my only comment to that would be, is that any changes that are, that we're looking at doing will not come into effect until after the October organizational meeting, and Mr. Gannon, you had your hand up.
Thank you. One final aspect on this is, this visionary document, it's really good to put down that it's a consideration. ASB is a consideration, just as a lot of different factors in. But as previously explained, the decisions on items come from council or other mechanisms that are defined. So if we do change this, it could have impacts, and we'd like to sit back and, and should council want us to change the wording, we'd like to evaluate what potential conflicts there may be in the background, should we proceed that way.
Is it, if I changed in 22, the wording to, the county will consider support of agricultural programs through the egg service board, is that better, or would you like me to remove it completely?
I'm fine with it either way. So if you want to make that wording change, and everybody's happy with it, I'm good.
So could you please read that back one more time?
So to be, the county will consider support of agricultural programming through the egg service board.
You good with that? Yeah, nobody said no, so I'm assuming we are.
Okay.
Oh. Go ahead. Counselor McGee.
I'm assuming we're going on to the next point we want to bring up.
I think so.
Okay, good. Because I missed speaking that I want you to have clarity about what does number six mean? So subdivision of law should be allowed where, in the opinion...
Should not.
Should not be allowed, in the opinion of the Development Authority, potential conflicts with adjacent or surrounding land uses would result. I feel like that's very, very broad and dangerous, because of how broad it is. What is its intention?
So it's just to keep away conflicting uses? So if there's a big industrial development, you're not going to put a country residential beside it? That was something that came, it's in the original, or it's in the one we have right now.
Yep.
We can certainly remove that if that's better.
I'm not suggesting it needs to be removed, I just felt like it was ambiguous, but...
It can be subjective, which is, does always create challenges, for sure.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you for the clarity.
I guess compressor plants aren't actually a problem, unless you're, unless you're not deaf?
I guess so. Okay? We will talk about this one when we get to the transportation, so we'll leave that one for now. We're moving on to hamlet and residential. And again, we'll move on, residential was, is first in here. Was there anything in the residential one? We did add a few things, just clarifying on some of the country residential stuff. We also talked about one of the questions we want to make sure everyone's in agreement with is, service roads into multi-lot subdivisions need to be consistent in servicing with the municipal road to them. So for example, if they come off pavement, they need to be paved. If they're coming off gravel, they should be gravelled. And that's more maintenance on the operations side, so they're not bringing in different equipment just to service one short piece of road, depending on what that looks like. So we've added that. I don't know if there's anything else that captured you on the residential one. I think for the most part, at the public engagements, people were surprised with how many residential options they had, and I think we're quite happy with it. And I think we're quite happy with that.
I do have one question with that, and I think I know the answer. But if it's coming off a secondary or a primary highway, it would have to be paved. But that's not taken care of by the contractor that does that. So we'd still be on the hook.
Yep, correct.
Yeah, okay.
We would maintain those service roads, for sure.
Yep. Counselor McGee, you had a question?
So just to be consistent to the previous item I made about of Neale County with the three and in the remnants of egg area, when it comes to number one or subdivision being three, it should be of Neale County again. I think it needs to be the same.
Okay.
Counselor Folds?
I know we didn't chat about this, but I did get a couple of calls from some people when they were reading this. They're like, how come I don't exist Sunny Slope? Why am I not in this document? Or Hesketh, or Allingham, or all, they just want to know why they're not being recognized because they're not a hamlet. They still exist within our borders and we take care of them.
Correct. And they would be called ex-hamlets in the land use by law, is what they're considered. It's part of how they're serviced, is what creates that. So there's, in most of our policies where we're providing water and wastewater, we recognize four hamlets that get that the same way. With Sunny Slope, they don't get their water. It's, it's done more like a rural landowner will get their water. It's not done through like it's our municipal water line, but it's not done like we service Swalwell or Torrington. It's actually, everyone has to get their own riser and pay for a hookup fee like you would in a rural area. So Sunny Slope is a little bit different in that regard, but it's really largely because of the servicing. And we still, under Municipal Affairs, are designated with a couple hamlets that we need to bring back to council to change their designation. Because Berchem, for example, is still, in as far as Municipal Affairs is concerned, is still designated a hamlet in Neale County because it's never been undesignated. But it is undesignated through land use. So how it's zoned is ex-hamlet. And so again, we have these areas that aren't serviced. They have very tiny lots. So they do have to still be dealt with like we do with a hamlet. But we are, it is challenging because of that potential lack of servicing with how they manage there. But again, most of them were there for decades, so we're not undoing history, we're just correcting the future. Sorry, got a frog. Anything else on the ham, or on the residential one before we move to the hamlets?
Counselor Cunningham, sorry?
No, that's fine. Just a question, maybe more of a Land Use question. Provisions for the garden suites, is there a minimum parcel size for a garden suite?
So any egg parcel?
Yep.
Can have a garden suite, anything that's zoned agriculture. Typically, we don't have anything under two acres. And the two acre ones are often inherited school sites, old school sites. Because typically, it's very difficult to service on that small of a parcel if you're not being able to connect to water at least. And so, so yeah, but any size with a primary? Like honestly, on a two acre, it may not be feasible to meet setbacks to all the services you have to have and roads and those types of things. But, so it, it would not, I, I don't want to say carte blanche anybody, but we don't necessarily have limits, but they would be looked at site specifically. But there has to be a primary residence. You can't just put a garden suite up without that primary residence. So
Counselor Cunningham?
A garden suite is different than creative architecture, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
They're smaller and they have to be done with a primary and they can never be subdivided out. They can tie into all the servicing with the garden suite, which they can't usually otherwise. Thank you. But, so yeah, so that, they, they are a little bit different, but they are all looked at site specifically. And again, no, it is a discretionary use. So if there's issues with the property that they're proposing, we would raise those through our report with, whether it's setback issues or too close to a Cooley or those types of things, we would raise those. So it's, they still have to be able to meet all the other requirements. You good? Okay. Moving on.
Reeve King?
You brought it up in response to Counselor Cunningham's question. Is a two acre minimum subdivision size adequate? Like if you have a two acre, if I subdivide two acres out of an egg parcel, are you actually going to be able to put a well and a waste system into that two acres and build as well?
So we do have that as a very minimum. But typically, you would have to have water at least, so because then you're only having to deal with septic setbacks. Not ideal, without question. Something to be talked about when we open land use by law. We don't ever see them coming through the door that way because even three acres is tricky for people on some lands to cite everything. So typically, most people are coming in with the five acre, which is the maximum. But again, all of that would be up for discussion during land use. For a country residential, we do allow them to go down to a half acre, but only if they can tie into both regional systems, septic and water somehow. So typically, you're going to find that next to an urban where they can tie in. So if somebody wanted to do, for example, a country residential close to Swalwell, if we could service that through Swalwell servicing, they could create a smaller acre. And, and that's what was being proposed north of town here. And then because of the cost of tying into those services, it wasn't feasible for them. But they wanted to do the smaller with tying into both the regional systems, so.
Okay, are we turning the page on to hamlets now?
Turning the page to hamlets.
Alrighty.
So I did get a question from Reeve King. So I wanted to clarify that for him. He had asked a question about the light industrial in the hamlet. And so how it's defined in the land use by law, and I think what we would do is just say as defined in the land use by law, so we aren't regurgitating everything twice. Light industrial means the use of land buildings and/or structures for an industrial activity that creates no adverse impacts beyond the boundaries of the site for which the associated activity takes place due to appearance, emission of contaminants, noise, traffic volume, odor and fire. No hazardous industrial use would be allowed on the light industrial. So even when we're talking about light industrial in a hamlet, again, we're always going to go back and look at what uses are allowed. Because a light industrial in a hamlet, you're going to have way less light industrial uses allowed than you would for somebody that's rezoning an egg property, for example, that is not so close to residential lands. So that's how it is currently defined in land use by law. And then it's really about the uses, but we can clarify that, so that as defined.
Reeve King?
So just as follow up to that, Ms. Hazelton, just a question around, like in those hamlets, the zoning is all helter skelter.
We're fixing that.
And so the potential exists that you could have someone ask for a light industrial usage right next door to a residence. And so does that light industrial definition cover us well enough that we would be able to refuse something that we don't feel is appropriate in that location?
So currently, right now, how it works, because in a lot of the hamlets, we have what we call hamlet general zoning, which accommodates every use allowed in the hamlet. So people can apply for anything. And even whether we recommend that, that's probably not a good idea. They still have the right to apply and we bring it to the planning commission. We are wanting to revise and we've already done a lot of the base work to do that in the hamlets. So when we touch land use by law, we do want to make sure the zoning is appropriate to what's currently on the lands. That way, if anybody wanted to apply for light industrial use, for example, and they're zoned residential, because that's where they are in the middle of, it's an empty lot in the middle of a residential block, they would have to rezone it, which puts you through that public hearing process. And, and again, if it's not a compatible use, that is a relevant planning reason. So that's some of the things that we would look at. So right now, it, it is tricky, but if we can get rid of that hamlet general district, really go back to just hamlet residential, hamlet commercial, if there's an opportunity. And we talked about the mixed uses at council where you have the ability to have the residents up top and the commercial on the main floor. So areas where there could potentially be that mixed use and then hamlet industrial. And with the uses in the hamlet industrial district, they're pretty, they're not the same uses you would find in an agricultural industrial district. So they would be much more minor. Are they perfect? Probably not. But again, those are all conversations we will have when we go through the land use by law.
Okay, so what you're saying is potentially hamlet general as a designation would go away?
Correct.
In the new, okay.
Correct. That, that zoning has not been helpful for us either. So we are addressing that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else on the hamlet before, okay?
Counselor Folds?
Number nine, sorry, nineteen, fourteen. Can you just explain, because this is a document that's out in years? This one here says that the study is specifically focused on infrastructure and servicing and will be completed in the next few years.
Correct.
It's the next few years. If this is a long-term document?
This is a new one.
Okay.
So this, this has been added to this one and we are currently, and they are the manager of Environmental Services?
Okay.
I think his title's changed. I don't know. He's already started that. So I think Torrington is the one that's underway. And then they'll kind of go in succession. And it's really to look at the infrastructure and what servicing we have, where those things need to be addressed or those types of things, so.
Thank you.
Reeve King?
I trust that this new study will get a lot more use than the previous study on hamlet infrastructure.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Zier.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Definitely. Yeah, as, as Ms. Hazelton noted, we're, we're currently underway with the Torrington study right now. Council will see Swalwell coming up for study requests in the budget for next year. And then we're doing Huxley and Wimborn the following year. From that, we are life cycling all the infrastructure within the hamlets, water, wastewater, utilities, and developing a replacement strategy for everything and all within the hamlet. So we're doing camera-ing of all them, determining the, the condition of everything and then prioritizing the replacements on the next twenty-year strategy.
Okay, so we done hamlets?
Okay, excellent. Moving right along. So we are on to economic?
No, we're not. Have we answered our question on carriage houses and/or back alleys?
Oh, sorry. You're right. There was some conversation with allowing carriage houses. And again, these conversations have been triggered because of the lack of affordable housing. And I do know there's some urbans that do allow you to put those carriage houses in the rear of the property. These would be tricky, without question, in the hamlets. There's not a lot of spacing and access you can't. We don't maintain the back alleys. And so we do need to make sure that whatever property, if you want to go forward with this, the access has to be off the front. They would have to tie into the existing services and do some of those things. It would not be without hiccups, without question, and not ever, not every property would be able to do it. But it is an opportunity to create something else that could be utilized in the hamlet specifically to allow them to have something smaller in the back that they could rent out or could create another line of affordable housing. So because of, we talked about the servicing and, and I did talk to Mr. McKeonan about that, and they would have to tie in for the most part with the existing services of the primary house. So there would be a lot of further conversation that would have to happen in land use by law. Were we to go here and say we would consider doing that in a hamlet? And then the, you know, the, the details would be sorted out when we did land use by law. And it would be limiting. We want you to know that upfront. There would be some lots that could not accommodate it. And so we want to make sure that we have a certain amount of spacing. Again, we want to keep residential properties or, or infrastructure away so that there's a little bit of fire distance. And there, there's a lot of things that we need to consider where we need to take this on in the land use. So, and those conversations on the specifics would happen then. But I didn't want you saying, oh yeah, great, let's do carriage housing without knowing that there are some issues and challenges with it. Not that they're insurmountable, they can be worked out. But we want you to know that upfront before we put something in here. So, yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Well, since I brought it up, I guess I have some concerns around this. I think that potentially in some of our hamlets, we could accommodate this. We have some hamlets where I don't think it's feasible because of our own infrastructure and the problems that we have in our own infrastructure. So if we were to consider adding that as a possibility, in my mind, we have to be very clear about where we might even consider that. And we have to be willing to say that there are some places where we just will not consider.
Correct.
And I'm, and I'm talking about complete hamlets where we might not consider that.
And it may be something we address with zoning. We may create another district where we have a residential two district and then it's applied only to specific lands that we can see from a planning perspective that could accommodate that. And every urban does that. There are lots of different opportunities in the residential districts, so that's not uncommon. But it's picking the properties that would be the tricky part, without question. And so it is going to create additional workload to try to go through and do that. I don't want to sugarcoat it. As a planning department, we will proceed with whatever your direction is and to the best of our abilities. It, it would be something new and untried, so as far as we're concerned in this county, anyway. So anyway, it's again, to you guys as whether or not you want it to potentially be considered in some areas or we just leave it out for now until we can do more homework.
Well, just as, as follow up to my original question, my concern is I'm not sure that we're at a point where we could adequately define where those might be. And in fairness to all of the individuals who live in a hamlet or a different hamlet, again, the question becomes can we apply this equally within those hamlets and to the residents? Because we might have a hamlet where it's something that people really desire, but we just don't have the infrastructure to support it. And so then, I guess my question really becomes is are we a little bit premature in, in sticking this into? I know we wanted to increase the housing options and we want to make it easy for people to either look after themselves or somebody else. But are we premature in considering this? That's, that's the question I have. I guess it's around infrastructure is where my concern is.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And no one in the planning department's going to be sad if you leave it out, so. I shouldn't speak so quickly for them. I don't, we, we have had some chats already and it's like, ugh. So anyway, it's, it's totally fine. It was raised and we felt it warranted further discussion, so.
Well, right now, it's a discussion between you and I. I, I would certainly like to hear a little bit more.
I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I guess one hamlet shouldn't restrict another hamlet overall because they are, the layouts are different in the different hamlets. But down the road, for sure, I would be interested in seeing, you know, we'd have to know what is a setback from, all, all those kind of things. You know what I mean? So it may not be feasible, but I don't think one hamlet should restrict another just because of the way its layout is. Because some of the hamlets are, well, in certain areas of the hamlets, they'll Because some of the hamlets are, well, in certain areas of the hamlets are laid out very well, and the back alleys are very well-defined. So not right now, but down the road, for sure, I'd like to revisit this one.
Kate?
So I think down the road, and after we have our infrastructure reports, we'll have a much better idea of who can be, who can be enjoying some of these excess things. But it also comes down to the lot size. I think it's going to come down to, the lot has to be X number of square feet or square meters, or whatever the process is, before we can even think about it, so. Oh, Mr. Gannon, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No problem, thank you through the chair. All those, all those different parameters can be considered, no different from when you're looking at a larger urban center. They have different ways or different districts that are designed a different way to ensure that it hits the essence of what they're trying to accomplish, if it's through designation or if it's through different opportunities. When we're looking at Caritas specifically, I think the first step is really going back and looking at where that opportunity is, what restrictions need to be in place, and what considerations need to be considered, should there be an appetite to move forward with this. So that would be all developed within conversations within land use by law, but having it within this document allows us to have the opportunity, having it in the land use by law, or looking at it as an opportunity with the land use by law. At the same time, understanding potential future growth within those areas, but still having those limitations in the land use by law to ensure those protectionisms or those requirements through the vision of council are obtained.
Any other comments? Does that bring us to the end of hamlets?
Pardon?
Does that bring us to the end of hamlets?
No, I forgot about.
Okay, keep on going.
I forgot about the home occupation majors.
Oh, right, okay.
So that came up, and there was an appetite, and I'm sorry, my slides are not in the same order as the municipal development plan here. Here we go. So it did come up at the public engagement. There was a lot of people that felt there was opportunities for people to do those home occupation majors. So we have included one in here for that, and that's number 10. And again, we would limit the number of uses that could happen in a hamlet when we deal with land use by law. So it's not just anything under the sun, but we would say there would be limits to the uses that could apply. So again, those conversations would be down the road, but at this point in time, there was a definite, definite feedback that they wanted us to be able to consider, the fact that somebody could have occupation in their accessory building that really does little to impact anybody around them, and could carry that out quite feasibly and help them stay more economically sustainable. So we will, again, have those future conversations, but that's what number 10 is about. And if everybody is okay with that, we can move on.
So my only comment would be is, nothing to do with number 10, but number six maybe addresses the thing about carriage housing being allowed in some hamlets and not in others, where we recognize the uniqueness of each hamlet. And so maybe it's something that we want to consider developing going forward.
And maybe it's something that we don't actually designate properties that way, but we create a district where they would have to rezone to that district, and then again, they're all looked outside specifically. Is the land that you're looking at sufficient to accommodate all the setbacks, the tie-ins to existing service, and keep some level of spacing? And so again, there's, there's ways that we can work that make this a little more creative, but at this point in time, we can leave it out to address at a later date, too. And we can always add it to land use without it being in the municipal development plan, because all the uses in the municipal development, we don't usually include the uses in the municipal development plan, so it's something that could come up later as well. Okay. Moving on to economic. Get my slideshow in the right place. So again, there, this was brought up many times in the discussions, that they want to be open, seen to be open for business. And then they talked about that potential to run another water line off of Aqua Seven, and then there was quite a bit of discussion regarding potential tax incentives. So we have incorporated some policies in relation to tourism as well, that came up under this one. And again, it was recognized that there is an importance to the local economy, and so they really wanted this to be done as a regional approach. So we did include a couple policies relating to this. And then there was conversation about potentially rezoning some of the lands within the growth centers to a land use district that might align within our municipal development plans and any adopted area structure plans that we have. And again, that was raised more to get some lands a little bit more shovel-ready for developers that wanted to come. So that's a conversation that, again, council will have to determine whether or not they choose to do that. Doesn't necessarily have to become part of the municipal development plan, but it was definitely raised throughout this process. And the other thing, the county will consider partnering, partnering with urban municipalities for servicing developments that are adjacent or fall within close proximity of the urban boundary, where feasible. We have done a little of this already, where we have serviced residents within some of our urbans, where it's more feasible for them to tie into our water line, for example. But that can go two ways, and so, and it's gone the other way as well, where they've serviced one of our developments. So again, we decided to incorporate that as an additional policy in here. And then the cost sharing for road, that did come up in, there was a few, we read quite a few comments regarding the appetite in that public engagement for people to say, yeah, the county, I'm okay if the county helps to do the road upgrades and do some of the water. They don't want us in doing internet or those types of things, but they did feel like there was a potential to cost share, if it would help bring development in and could increase an area for that potential. And so again, we've put that in as a potential. And then we also, in 16, we added something about, again, we'll have to revisit if we change anything on land suitability, but tax incentives may be considered where cost sharing has not been requested, if developers are looking at lands class four to six under the LSRS. So again, was there anything that jumped out on the economic one? I know if you didn't participate in that working group, you don't always have the context of what the conversation was, and we're going to try to help with that.
Reeve King.
So I might be jumping on the same one as Counselor Foles is, but I guess I would like to see point nine removed in its entirety.
Okay, that was a question.
I really don't, I don't want us to be seen as not encouraging, but I don't also want us to be seen as maybe pushing people to go in a direction that might interfere with their deciding to develop or not. So by not specifying where they get their energy from, just leaves the door open. So if they want to consider it, we'll support that, but I don't think that, the word encourage, to me, just seems to almost say, we're going to ask you to consider being in that direction. So either we remove that in its entirety, or we just say we would support, but to me, I just assume.
We're just fine, we're fine with that. The other one that is in the existing one that creates some dilemmas, seven, and that's why they're highlighted in yellow, because we want to have further conversation. And again, that's very subjective, and it can be a card easily played where it may not be appropriate to play that card, and especially if, if the issues can be addressed with conditions, and there's things that we can use to mitigate. So that one does create some problems as well, but again, we await your feedback.
Oh, Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, just to follow up what Reeve King said, I believe last time we went through this, that was my comment on number nine. If we're going to say we're open for business, and somebody's coming to do a development, but they're not wanting to use alternative or renewable energy, I don't think we're going to deny them. So yeah, that was my comment last time, was to remove that.
Counselor Foles.
I just have a couple, and they came from some people that live right in the town of Torrington. The one where it states under objectives on economic, to create employment opportunities for the local population, I was asked if the county is responsible for this. But that's how they read it.
Yeah.
So maybe some different wording.
Kate?
To encourage creation of? You know, just some wording that doesn't imply it's our job specifically, but that we, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Foles.
Under number 15, where it says, share in the cost of road upgrades and water services, I was asked to ask who owns the services if we're sharing the cost of them.
We do. If we're talking roads and water, it would be our infrastructure.
Oops, sorry, Counselor Cunningham.
No, that's okay, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm sure you could see that, yeah. Smoke out of my head, yeah. Well, no, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about goal number one, only because, like, are we, are we telling everybody that's potentially going to do a business that we are for sure going to provide that necessary infrastructure? For example, like, we had the airport come and do a presentation a couple months ago. I mean, we're bringing it back to consider when we look at costs of sewer and water. Like, I just don't want to put it out there that if you come knock, and we're going 100% put the infrastructure, like, I think it has to be on a case-by-case basis. So I'm just wondering if that could be worded just a little bit differently, if that makes sense? Number one under goals. Like, I want, I mean, that's, it's a goal, but I just wouldn't want people to assume that if they build it, we'll 100% do it, if that makes sense. Or maybe attain, is it? Is there a different word besides attain, maybe? Consider, review, I'm not sure what would be better. I just don't want it to be a guarantee, that if you're coming here, we're providing you the infrastructure, for sure.
Okay, we can mess with that one a little bit.
Through the chair, number seven, Barb, like, shall not be permitted. They are very strong words.
Yes, they are.
Powerful, like, is that what we want? Like, that's a, to me.
That's what, I prefer to have it removed. This is one that came, it was in the last version. Like I said, it's very subjective, and it's also an easy card for people to play, without actually being able to work with that developer to mitigate issues.
Can you just change, I'm sorry, through the chair.
Go ahead, Reeve King.
Jumping all over this. Can we just change the shell to a May? And so that just takes away the absoluteness of it, and leaves you room to perhaps look for creative solutions.
Anything else on this one before we move forward?
Counselor Foles.
This was a question, just from the photographs, and I'm not going to say who, talk to me about it. Under the economic development, you have listed of different businesses we have in our county. Did you get permission to use those pictures or their information in here?
Yes, typically, we do, yes. And we get them from them.
Counselor Foles.
We can be.
I know, I'm sorry. It's just that, it's just, when you look at that, and this is just from the ASP, I know what that stands for, but can you somewhere just spell it out first before you put it again, because I do get that question so many times.
Okay. I do think we do, and we do have a chart in the back with all the acronyms, but we will make sure that if this is the first time it's spelled out.
Yes, and the reason why is, is most people aren't going to the back to look at acronyms until later.
Kate, you can. Kate?
Are you saying we can? Barb's secret comment? Are we on growth management?
Was there anything on the?
Counselor Cunningham.
Just one more, sorry. What was I going to say? Okay, so number 20 with the support of a bi-local, are we just saying in that one, like, when I read it, I'm, all I'm seeing is that we're going to support local markets? Like, is there other ways the county's going to be supportive of bi-local, or just by, by supporting local? Because I, I mean, we haven't really had a lot of markets lately.
Counselor McGee.
Yeah, I have a problem with that, that sentence. My personal opinion is we take it right out, just because that is trendy. So that's the trendy way of supporting businesses right now. It's already moving away to that, into a more boutique-style shop of local businesses. So I think because it's so trendy, we need to just take that.
Are we, are we good with that? Take it out?